All right, everybody. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order a special meeting. The City Council of Satellite Beach, July 17th, 2019, approximately 5:00 P.M. The reason for the special meeting is the presentation of the FY 1920 budget.
All right. So you want to take it over?
Please.
Thank you, Mayor. So we're just going to jump right into your presentation that we have prepared for you. We have the usual format where we're going to talk about the parameters of the budget. The staff is going to present each of their departments and their accomplishments and needs, and then we're going to move into the actual budget. So we're going to get started because it's a long presentation. So the first, we always start out with the budget process, and we start out our process in late March. We start looking at capital projects with the departments and start figuring out how, what we're, you know, what our needs are, some of the priorities of the community and so on. And then we begin building the budget. And, you know, as you know, we, I talk a lot with all of you to get what your priorities are and what you're hearing in the community. And then we get, we propose a budget and present it to you no later than the first meeting in August. So you receive that budget with this agenda. And...
Sorry.
And you can tell Dominic switching out the good seat, giving it to the city attorney.
He doesn't do anything.
And then, then you'll set the tentative millage rate at your next meeting. And you also hold two public hearings in September and adopt the budget by the end of September. You will, at your next meeting, you will be presented with a resolution establishing the stormwater assessment for the year. And the public hearings in September for the adoption of the budget are September 4th and September 18th. So this is just a general breakdown of the taxes that I pay. I use my house, just so everybody, so I don't point out somebody else accidentally that don't want to leave their house put up on a screen. And you can see that, you know, obviously, we are not the only taxing authority. There's also St. John's Water Management District, Florida, and the Navigation District, several county special districts, and then also the county, and then the school districts. And if you switch to the next slide, you'll see that, how that is impacted on a pie chart with City of Satellite Beach and the school board being the two major ones, the county the third, and then your special districts coming after that. In, in our city, we have what we call a valuation growth base in terms of tax base. So our tax base grows primarily through property valuation increases. There's other cities like West Melbourne, Palm Bay, Titusville, you know, even Melbourne at this point, that have what we call a growth-dependent budget because they fund most of their capital improvements on new growth. So that is different. So, so we wanted to show you what, what that is. In last year between, or this, this last fiscal year, in this fiscal year, the difference keeping the millage rate, or with the millage rate that we are proposing, the difference is $286,349, which is about 3.5 percent increase. And to give you, to, to give you a perspective on what that can pay for, the raises with the, with the salaries and the salary survey adjustments cost $261,321. So that, a lot of times, our valuation increases only pay for healthcare increases and staff raises and really personnel issues. So we're going to talk about capital as we move forward. We get a lot of, you know, we have some changes going on in the community in terms of development, like Doubles is being constructed. We had the dentist office constructed, Oceana, and some other minor buildings. And we wanted to make sure people understood that sometimes we can have a large construction project or even a small one, but if it's completed and CO'd after the first of the year, it goes on to the next year. So sometimes we won't see that tax revenue for another year and a half to maybe even two years. So that's why we put this slide in here, so you understood the impact. In December 2017, revenue will be received in 2018, which is for us, a $12,475 additional revenue in term, and that's attributed to solely to growth. And then from December 18th, revenue will be received in 2019, and that will be in fiscal year 1920, and that's $22,180. Okay? And then I'm going to talk a little, just show you kind of a history of how the city has been spending, and capital spending, which has been kind of our focus lately because it's, a lot of the facilities, you know, for example, the Schecter Center, which was done 20 years ago, it's, they're all starting to come to a point where we have to invest in them. And then also, at the same time, we're having to do a lot of stormwater investments and roadway investments. So to give you a history of capital spending from 2009 to 2013, we spent $6.4 million in capital spending, and that means, you know, any, any capital outlay, so facilities, infrastructure, and so on. From, from 2014 to 2018, we're, we're spending $8.42. So, so we're already ramping up the amount that we're spending, and that does not include 2019, which so far, we're up to $2.8 million. So you can see the need is getting bigger, and we're starting to address that with those Every year, we have an employee budget committee. This committee, this year, we, we went back to an employee budget committee. I'm going to talk about the citizens' budget committee in the next slide, but this year, we had our, our staff employee budget committee. And this is an employee from each department that's appointed to serve on the committee. And the purpose of that is to review department expenditures, recommend cost savings, recommend a budget theme, they're the ones that come up with a theme each year, and then also involve the employees in the budget process. I find that helps them have ownership of, you know, their, their departmental budget. They understand where the funds are coming from and, and how important it is to follow the expenditures and the guidelines and so on. So this year, the budget advisory committee was Justina Rocha, Linda Anderson, Lisa Davis, Grace DeRosa, Donna Painter, Nicholas Sinzon, and Heather Black. And I've got a nice little picture of them up there. We, previous year, we had our citizens' budget committee. And as you remember, recall, this was a committee we tried to keep, you, you all made it clear that you wanted to appoint people that hadn't been involved much with the city before to kind of get some fresh perspective and ideas. And that committee came out with a recommendation to raise the millage rate to 8.9, and you ended up going to 8.8212. The, they also recommended that when reserves meet 15 percent, the excess would be directed towards debt service. And then create a departmental operating budget for management of hurricanes and other significant events to manage expenses, and you'll see that line item in your budget now. Raise the stormwater ERU to 200, which you have done. Embark on a path of debt reduction, allocating 10 percent of each year's net increases to reserves to accelerate principal payments, starting with this proposed budget. And we have so far met that with paying off debt service already. So we've, we've done that. Create business development and business relationship committee to increase commercial growth and engagement. And we are with the, working through the business outreach event that we have at Whiskey Beach Pub. We're trying to, you know, come up with the ideas of how to create a committee. And then empower the recreation department to develop the city tour operation with existing assets to grow with the city. And I confess, we have not started on that yet. And then consider the feasibility of using assessments to fund future projects. And we, now, we don't have an assessment process currently, there, there's a law, but that's not something we have considered yet because it's just not a need at this point. So at this point, I'm going to ask Support Services to come up and give their presentation. Support Services includes functions of finance, the city clerk's office, IT, and HR.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So the Support Services Department, starting in the fiscal year 1920, is going to have the city clerk's department come underneath of it. It's just important to note that because you'll see the differences in the budget this year and how those numbers change a little bit. So they, the city clerk's office attended additional training and obtained software to convert documents and the city website to ensure ADA compliance with the goal of completion by March of 2020. You all know that's a good goal for us, that we're trying to get settled because we want to make sure that everything is in compliance as possible. The administrative assistant obtained records management recertification through the Florida Records Management Association, and a new camera system and software, which will allow live streaming on the city's website for city meetings, which is projected to be operational early this fall, which we're very excited about. City council approved the implementation of a new finance software. This will streamline payroll accounts payable and start the process of a paperless invoice system. IT is continuing to develop an employee internet with the conversion to a cloud-based server. That process is happening currently. Both of those types of things are going to be happening around the September, October timeframe of this coming up. We are projected to get all computers updated to Windows 10 by the end of December, partnering with Indian Harbor Beach on cybersecurity training and education. We found that that is being more and more of an issue, and so it's time to, to really get together as a training and try to make sure that all of us cities together are working together to figure out what the best solutions are. Working towards and continuing to reduce the carbon footprint, city hall employees are working together to recycle more, be more energy efficient with the lights and computers, and work towards being paperless. Our human resource manager has successfully implemented the change to Health First as the city's new health insurance provider. He hosts educational events for employees and retirees on health benefits, continues to successfully operate the employee health clinic, and has started the next fiscal year with a 0 percent healthcare increase. So we are very excited to have that as well. Did the fourth annual personal health assessment event. He also helps lead the safety committee. And in that safety committee, they can qualify for a safety grant up to $5,000, and we successfully did that again this year. I think that's probably the fourth or fifth year in a row that we've done that. That grant can go towards capital things, and then they reimburse us $5,000 of it. So it's a, it's a great, it's a great program.
Chief? She can shoot a gun, but I can't put the weapon up.
Yeah, I can. Oh, God, thanks for the man. Good evening. First of all, let me say thank you for the opportunity to talk with you all. Whenever we have the opportunity to talk about the police department and the things that we do and the accomplishments we have, I, I really do enjoy it. So thank you, city manager, mayor, and council for allowing me to be here. So the police department voted to save the city and state of Florida. You didn't think you were going to get through this presentation without hearing that at least once. So I figured that would be the, that would be the theme. So, you know, how do we accomplish this? The hiring process is probably the most important part of, of what we do, because if you get the right people from the beginning, then you've got a much better chance. And I've said many, many times, as seen recently by the number of people that, that have come in, that we've tried to, to train up and that just didn't quite meet our standards, and so we had to move on and go a different direction. And I've said many times, and some of you may have even heard me say this, that we, we will not lower our expectations to meet your skill level. You will raise your skill level to meet our expectations, or we'll, we'll find someone else that, that will. And sometimes that comes with a price, but the bottom line is, we have probably the best group of people we've had in the 33 years that I've been there right now, and it's absolutely coming together, and, and that's where it starts. And how you get there is, is by training. You can see some of the training that we do, a lot of that stuff that we do. I wanted to point out just a couple of those in that list. Driver training. Driver training is something that we do that very few other cities do. And we go out and, and train on our pursuit policy, and we actually do hands-on, in the car, cone driving, and that has significantly helped to reduce our crashes that, that we have, knock on wood, but I didn't just jinx this. And it just makes a big difference for insurance and for workers' comp and all the things you could imagine that would come with, you know, with having a crash of any kind. And the other two things I wanted to point out would be the active shooter training in the schools and the missing and abducted child training. Again, many of you have heard me say this many times, when you have a low-frequency, high liability event, you have to train for that because of exactly its nature. It's low frequency and it's high liability. Means it doesn't happen very often. So if you're not trained properly, then when it does happen, and it will eventually somewhere, it's going to happen, and you want to be ready just in case it happens here. And we do that. And the other thing that we do is that we train in all four of our schools in the summer. We have our officers go in, every one of our officers is trained in all four of the schools. So not only do they, do they know the school, do they know the, the process, do they know if it's just you, then you're going in. If it's you and somebody, then the two of you go in, whoever or whatever, but you, you've got to go. I, you know, I don't have to expound on that. I think we all know that that's, that's, that's been our plan for, for years now. But a lot of the problems that people have is administrators will be calling out, hey, we're in building aid, or we're in the science wing, or whatever. They don't know where that is. So we have, not only do we have that training where they go in and know the school, the layout of every one of them, but they have at their fingertips on the CAD system and the laptops in the cars, the layout of every school. So they can punch up every school right now and have a full schematic layout of, of the school instantly. And, and those things just are significantly beneficial when you're responding to any type of thing like that. All of our officers are of their own crime scene unit. We get that call all the time. We're, we're at a scene of a burglary, and someone will say, where's the crime scene unit? And you go, well, you're looking at them. And, you know, we just, we do all of our own stuff. And because of, again, because of your support, we also have the DNA collection now. We all know about the incident happened at the Hightower, and we have the ability and do that to collect DNA that, again, not about, a lot of other smaller agencies do. They have a major crime scene, they call the sheriff's office, or they call a larger agency. We don't need to, and we can, we can take care of it all in-house. We cross-train, and this is something, again, I've mentioned, but I, I'd like to talk about it because I'm very, a big proponent of it. We have a lot of people in our department that are cross-trained to do many different things. Our record supervisors cross-train in evidence and dispatch. Our CID assistant is also our evidence person. And, and everybody can do different things. So if we have an incident, be it hurricane or a, a structured fire or something that we have all hands on deck, everybody should just about do everything. And, and what we then accomplish is we accomplish a lot of things with a few amount of people. And that's a, that's a big deal. The only problem is when someone, when someone leaves, that's a lot of institutional knowledge that, that, that goes out the door, but we've been able to maintain it, and I'm, I am very proud about that. Training, we do a lot of training online, and we do a lot of in-house training to save money for obvious reasons, but there is no substitute for subject matter experts. So you can see some of the things there that we train our officers on that maybe, that we'll send off, say. The SRO school is obviously very important. That's a, that's an, that's an outstanding school. It's a full two weeks, and you want to know everything about everything there is to know about active shooter and situations, all the way down to just dealing with children in a regular, everyday, non-threatening situation. They cover everything. That kind of stuff is, is, is critical, and every one of our SROs have been there. We've got a lot of new laws that have taken place recently that are extremely difficult to, to keep up with, but it's important. You, you have to know what's going on, you have to know what the laws are, but more importantly, you have to be trained and, and understand how to handle it. You know, the marijuana hemp law changed July 1st was a huge, huge thing. Marcy's Law with protecting victims' rights. So those are the things that, that we spend a lot of time training and keeping our folks abreast of. The civil citation program, again, we're the, we're the leading agency in the county. Yes, sheriff's office, Melbourne Palm Bay, issuing civil citations to juveniles, because we believe that juvenile who's 12 years old, 14 years old, makes a mistake, they don't need to be in the system. Sometimes they do. It's an officer discretion issue, but very, very rarely do we do that unless we just absolutely have to. And it works out great. And we issue civil citations for every possible chance we can for every juvenile, to give them an opportunity to not get a slap on the wrist. They're, they're being, they're being held accountable, but they're just not in the system. And it, it's been working out great. And every single meeting that I go to, they point out Satellite Beach is, is the number one, and they always look at the larger agencies when they say, go, you've got 1,500 people, but yet Satellite Beach is still issuing more civil citations to juveniles. Obviously, the, I mentioned the SROs, the Stoneman Douglas. You know, quite honestly, you all thankfully approved the additional SROs, and that, there's a cost to that. But what is the alternative? You know, having two schools with an SRO and two schools with a sheriff's office guardian program? Well, I didn't believe that was the, the right thing to do or the best thing to do. It would be better than nothing, of course. And, and it can't be working out any better. But that, there's an issue. We have, we have the SROs there. So if one of those SROs at any one of those four schools calls in sick or can't make it or gets hurt or anything like that, we have to backfill that. It's not like just saying, well, guys, you're going to be short on the road today. We have to fill that. So that, that has to come, and 90% of the time, if not almost 100%, that's going to be overtime. But it's, it's working out well, and the feedback that we're getting from the, from the elementary schools is just nothing but, but positive. So we're, we're, we're happy about that. Police volunteers, we talk about them many times. You can see all the things they do. We got a firehouse sub grant for a new ATV. Now we have an ATV, again, that we can go back up on the beach. We, the police department uses it if we have an incident or situation, something washes up, someone missing, anything like that, and the volunteers go up and down. And I tell you, quite honestly, when we have the volunteers on the ATV protecting that side of people's houses, oceanfront houses, and then the volunteers in the boat, and they're going through the canals, now all sides of everyone's house in this entire city is getting protected. Because a lot of places, they, they drive by A1A, and they see the front of your house, but they don't know what's going on in the back, and they can't see it. Well, we're seeing all sides to, to every house, and I, I just think that's the right thing to do. Our golf cart program that you all approved is going very well. We have 37 registrations as of right now. Everyone is coming in, they're doing the right thing. Everyone, I, I believe without fail is thankful that, that they're able to do it. They're, they're saving money, they're not using, burning gas, they're being able to go places, they're taking their kids places. You know, our parents say the greatest thing ever is every morning she gets up and takes her kids to school in the golf cart. And they get fresh air and it wakes them up. And I mean, it was just, listening to her talk, it was, you know, it was like the poster child for the program. Another grant that we got for the purchase of the DVR, right now, our evidence facility is, is fully being recorded, but we're going to upgrade the system to where it's going to be motion-activated and be able to keep that data for, for much longer. Our crossing guard program, I tell you, we have some of the best crossing guards anywhere. This is not, this is not just a job for them. They come in and they are doing, they know all the kids, they know who's going with who. I mean, when you have a crossing guard that jumps into a canal to, to save a child, and when you have a crossing guard that looks out and sees a kid getting into a car and says, that kid's never been picked up in that car, and that person driving, it doesn't look like anybody I've ever seen, and calls us? I mean, come on, how do you, how do you get that for, you know, $14 an hour or whatever? It's because they're not doing it for a job, it's because they're doing it because they live here and they love the community and what they do. And, and it's just, it's, it's awesome, and, and we, we enjoy having them. Stopfire program, it's, it's, it's just, it's huge. We have over 100 people now, and we constantly have to turn out people that don't live in the city. If we could, we'd have, we'd have 1,000 people on this from, like, on the entire beachside. And people, I've had people say, boy, I wish I lived in Satellite Beach just for that. And there's a million other reasons they wish they lived here, but that's just one of the things that, that we're able to do. We just are now, literally as we're standing here talking, the installation is happening for a new radio system. We didn't have a choice. The radio system we had wasn't going to be connectivity, wasn't going to have connectivity next year. So it was one of those, you know, unfunded mandates, as they say, but we, but we did it. And now we have, while we did it, of course, we did it right. We removed the carpeting in there. By the way, that was the same carpeting from the day the building was built. Just give that a thought for a second. Yeah, exactly. And it's, you know, they painted it and they took care of it. And, and finally, the dispatchers who are close in this room in the dark for hours and hours and hours and can't get up, can't move, can't leave or do anything, at least have a respectable, decent place that they can work. Again, thanks to, to the support from, from the city manager and from you folks. Our citizens' police academy, again, we, we've done, we've done three of them. It's, we have a waiting list for the most part, and people just, every week, they're, they're thrilled to, to learn the new stuff, and at the end, they all say, we had no earthly idea of all the stuff that you do. Like, we just didn't know. Until you sit through 12 weeks and hear it from every single different person on what we do, it's, it's, it's hard, but, but they love it. We have specialized security details. The Shabbat Center, every Saturday, we have a police officer there for four hours in a police car. Obviously, I, I don't have to tell you all about recent events that have happened in, in that community. And the rabbi called me, and we have an excellent relationship. I've known him for a long time, and we, we speak regularly on things, not even just this. And said, you know, we, we want to feel safer. Can, can you help us? And I said, yes. So we have an agreement that we'll, we'll split it with you. So for four hours, he pays for two and we pay for two, but that's two hours of overtime every Saturday. Kingdom's Gate did the same thing. They said, we, we want, we want someone there as well. So we're there three hours every Saturday. You're talking about SROs and the road and, and details of different churches, it, it gets tough. You know, one of our, probably our biggest accomplishment with regard to accreditation is our second Excelsior. It's hard enough getting the first one, but maintaining it is significant. Not only we're the first agency in Bavaro County to be accredited, but we're the first one to exceed Excelsior, receive Excelsior, and now the very first one to receive it for two years in a row. And that just, that just tells the community, and it tells you all, and it tells the officers that we're doing everything the way it should be done with best practices that are known that are out there in conjunction with laws. And when there's 278 policies and someone from the outside that doesn't know you or anything, and they come in and they scrutinize every single bit of it, and they come away going, wow, that was a flawless review. I mean, how do you, how do you not be proud of that? I mean, it's, you know, I wonder what other agencies that aren't accredited, you start to go, you know, what's, what's going on behind the curtain kind of thing, you know? And I, I, I just enjoy that. One of the, one of the things that the city manager did when she first got here, and I can't tell you what a, what a huge impact, and she saw it instantly, I didn't have to sell it, which, which is great. We were doing the tour, and she looked at some of these police cars, was it five years ago now, I think, and, and said, these, these are disgusting. One had 200 and some thousand miles on it. I mean, they were just, they were horrible. They were, they rode hard, they were hot-seated, and she said, we, we need to go to a take-home car policy plan like everybody else does. It helps recruitment and retention. And she knew all these things before I, I'm like, I had this whole speech ready. I had to get the tour. And what a significant difference. Now there's more accountability, there's police cars that are driving around the city. Bad guys don't know if they're working, if they're not working, if they're going to the store, if they're just parked in front of their house because they live there or they're on a call. The accountability has been absolutely incredible, because when you have three people driving a car, and then there's a dent or a scratch or something, what happened? Oh, it wasn't there when I was driving it. I didn't, you know, and, and Alan's going to talk about it a little bit too, as far as the, the maintenance reduction. Not only accountability, not only the cars lasting longer, not only they're safer, but we, we're saving money by just, by just having a replacement plan, just so we're not fixing it failure. Because for a long time, unfortunately, before the city manager got here, we were fixing a failure. And, and it's just, that's not sustainable. And we talk about sustainable in the city all the time. We're, we're so much more sustainable in, in our police department due to the support that we get from, from her and you all, that, that it's, it's incredible. New handheld radios, exact same thing. At one point, we had five different models, ra, model radios. Some of them, there was no parts for. Some of them were just hanging on. When they failed, we, we just trade them in and we'll get rid of them. Some of them worked pretty good most of the time, and then there was a few lucky people that had new ones that worked all the time and actually had warranty. We don't have that anymore. We, we got the radios replaced, we have them on rotation, so now there's no surprise. I'm not coming to the boss and saying, oh, by the way, I need $30,000 because all these radios are bad. Well, where, where were you three years ago, two years ago, five? We don't have that problem now because it's, it's on a replacement plan with our capital improvement, and then, and I love it. You probably have seen the new uniform vests that are out. I can't tell you what a huge, huge hit that was. I started seeing it all over the state, all over the country, quite honestly. And what they're doing is they're not doing what I'm wearing right now, is having everything all crammed on your waist, which is pulling at your back and, and knees and everything else. Now everything's up here, and the beautiful thing about it is with one zip, you can pull it off and you can get some air. When you go in the station, you can take it off and you can set it down, and in 10 seconds, you throw it on, you zip, and you're out the door. This is not something that's conducive to, to doing that. It's a, it's a process just to go in and go to the bathroom, for God's sakes. And, and the, and I'm glad the way she brought it up is because, guess, guess how that worked out? Because of the safety issues, because of the fact they can carry more stuff, because there's going to be less workers' comp plans, left back injuries, knee injuries, the safety money paid for the line share.[1734.88] injuries, knee injuries, the safety money paid for the line share of that. So that was almost all paid for with the safety grant because of what it does. But what it did from around was incredible. And to be able to have the ability and the approval to use a little bit of money to make up the difference from the safety grant, to get that for patrol officers, I can't tell you how incredible that was. So we have twenty-three sworn officers, or we're budgeted for twenty-three sworn officers. Everybody talks about it, and it's hurt for years, about this, you know, two-per-thousand kind of thing. Actually, that's, people use it as a benchmark, and honestly, that's about the most you really should do with it, is a benchmark. Because there's so many variables that go into that. You just can't, you just can't, you can't use two-per-thousand because some people don't need that many, some people need a lot more than that. Really, your community dictates how many officers you need. And that's the biggest variable. Are you a big, like Cocoa Beach, where they have a lot of influx of visitors and vacationers? Well, then, two-per-thousand for the regular residents isn't going to work. You see what I'm saying? So it just varies. But it is at least a benchmark. But what I think is interesting is we have a two-per-thousand, but of that two-per-thousand, or the, I'm sorry, the twenty-three sworn, it's the two-point-one-for-thousand, but of that twenty-three sworn, you take out the command staff, which is now only three of us. It's me and Commander Varios and Commander Hodge. Take those three out, you take out the four SROs that are in the schools now, and you take out the two detectives. So when you say there's twenty-three sworn, people think, "Well, there's twenty-three people driving around at two in the morning, stopping cars and writing tickets." That's absolutely not happening. We only have two people working fifty percent of the time, and three people working the other fifty percent of the time. And that's it. And just what I think is extremely telling is Indian Harbor Beach, just to put this in perspective, Indian Harbor Beach has a population of eighty-five-hundred at their last census. They have one SRO, and they have twenty-two sworn officers. Now think about that. Twenty-two sworn, we have twenty-three, with four SROs, and ten-thousand-and-three-hundred-ish population, you know, last I remember. It's just not really sustainable. And of course, as you can see, whenever you have a situation like that, one person takes off, one person gets sick, one person breaks a toe, which we just had happen, is out for four weeks, you got to backfill that with overtime now. It's not like you can just say, "Okay, well, let's move this person," or whatever, because you've got, you're at minimum. And another thing that's going to be a little concerning is we have two veteran sergeants that are retiring within five months of each other. Two of the most senior patrol people, patrol supervisors in the entire department are retiring within three, four months of each other. And Paul Graitcher is, the final year of his drop, he'll be done in December. And then, two months later, Sergeant Eric Fuller is retiring. Yeah, you're talking about almost fifty years, or no, more than fifty years of institutional knowledge that's walking out the door. And when you have a younger patrol squad already, and you have that kind of talent, really, leaving, it's difficult to overcome. Communications, I talked a little bit about the radios. Same with communications, you've all heard me mention this. We have one person working in communication, in the communications, our dispatcher, forty-five percent of the time. So almost half the time, there's only one person working. And if you've ever been in there during any major event, it'll just boggle your mind that they can even handle it. And it's a situation where probably ten to twelve years ago, we should have gone to dispatchers twenty-four-seven. We haven't been able to get there yet. We're three dispatchers short of that. But at least now, because we have such talented people and such experienced people, that they can handle it. But with the regulations and the laws and the requirements now, it is so difficult to keep up with everything you've got to do and stamp and know. And you miss one thing, and it's a problem. Yes, ma'am.
And Chief, I just wanted to point out, like, you know, it is concerning with the safety of the patrol officers, but the big concern for me right here is the dispatchers. And I have, that's something we're going to be trying to work on, you know, coming up. But tell them about, you know, today, in today's world, when there's an accident, what happens to those poor dispatchers?
Yeah. It's unbelievable, because everybody's got a cellphone, and everybody wants to be the one that reports it. So we'll have a parking lot crash, and we'll get nine 911 calls for a parking lot crash. Can you imagine when we have that crash on Sunday night? That was basically three crashes all at one time. It was four-thirty on a Sunday afternoon, and a woman caused a crash at Casia, ran off the road at Royal Palm, took out a guardrail, backed up, drove straight across the highway, somehow didn't kill anybody herself, crashed into another guardrail in front of the clubhouse before we were able to get there. So 911's absolutely blown up. And the problem, folks, is if you have twenty-five 911 calls, you have to answer every single one of them. You can't just go, "All those calls, they're probably going to be for the crash." Because the one time that you don't answer one is the person that says, "My kid is drowning," or "My husband's having a heart attack," or something. And you dispatch in fire, and you're dispatching police, and you're dispatching an ambulance, and you're dispatching all these things, and having to keep track of where everybody is, and get stamped in times and all that kind of stuff, so that you can show the state, and show the citizens, and show you the response times and all that, and do all that at one time, and answer every single call. Oh, by the way, officers are calling in radio traffic, running tags, people are walking in the front desk, ringing the little bell, you know, because you don't jump up and answer.
And then also, you know, if you get an EMS call at the same time, they have to route that, too, while they're having to answer every. So that's why having two dispatchers at one time is pretty much, today's world, it's necessary.
Yeah, it's absolutely, one-hundred percent necessary. I couldn't agree more.
Chief, just one question. Any changes with the bilingual? Is that hitting you guys yet?
No, no. Because we have several people that are bilingual in the department.
I mean, as far as dispatching goes?
No, we have ways that we can connect them with people that are bilingual, that can translate. Plus, they can do text, and there's multiple ways. So we've had it, but it's not been a problem, I guess I should say. But that's a very good point, because that is something that has been talked about recently. Honestly, I just wanted to close by saying thank you to the city manager, the mayor, and the city council for your support. And I don't just mean your financial support, I think that's obvious, but it's just the overall, general support of what you do. Because we accomplish a lot, overall, I don't mean just the police department, the entire city, but we couldn't do it without the, all of the support we get. And I just want to say, from all the men and women at the police department, thank you very much, because we're happy here, and we do as good a job as we can, but we wouldn't be able to accomplish anything without the support of you all. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. Here to tell you a little bit about the fire department. Our organization, we currently have three shifts, A, B, and C shift. They are, two of the shifts are fully staffed, with five persons per shift and a four-man minimum. We keep the four-man minimum, so we can run two ALS trucks twenty-four-seven, available to handle concurrent medical calls that come in, a fire, auto accident at the same time, but also have that additional staffing for any critical calls that come in. Currently, one of the shifts is at a four-person staffing, which does create some overtime whenever anybody is out of class, or calls in sick, or has vacation. That does generate some overtime on that shift that's permanently at four staffing.
Hey, Jeff, real quick, could you explain when you have, like, a cardiac call?
Yes.
And it takes, like, one time to watch them do one, and you'll see why they need four people at that call. That's why we have this staff.
Usually, a cardiac arrest in the hospital, they'll call a code blue, and they get a team of people. And it's basically the same thing as that, except it's happening in somebody's house. So it's really difficult for two people to really effectively run one. So that's when we have both trucks go to it, and the more people are there, we can have more successful outcomes. And later on, I'll show you what our cardiac arrest survival rates are, as compared to the national rates. And we definitely have very good cardiac arrest survival rates. Currently, this year, up to this date, we've run one-thousand-and-forty-two calls. Of those, seven-hundred-and-eighty-four of them are EMS, medical emergencies. The balance of them are also litigists and wellbeing checks, and public assists, and fire-related calls, which are automatic fire alarms, smoke investigations, and structure fires. We have had some challenging responses lately. A roof rescue on June eighteenth, where we actually had a person on a roof, right as the thunderstorm was hitting, lightning cracked in, it's pouring down rain, and he was in cardiac arrest on his roof. And we were able to successfully get him off the roof and into the ambulance in ten minutes. And that's through the training that I'll get into later, that everything clicked, and we were able to pull that off. Our cardiac arrest survival rates, as I mentioned earlier, are fifty-seven percent currently for this year, from October one to now. The national average is less than thirty. It varies depending on that. Some areas are as low as ten percent, but nationally, it's less than thirty. And we have had a lot of missing persons searches with the police department recently that we participate in. We recently did fill our part-time fire inspector, so he's able to get out there and do more fire inspections. Currently, we've done two-hundred-and-ninety-four inspections in this fiscal year, and we've found forty-one violations that have been corrected. The forty-one violations, as opposed to inspections, seems a little low, but that's because of our fire inspection program that we've had running, that most of the businesses, they're compliant with what we do. And this also keeps our structure fire numbers low, because we're finding those issues before they surface. Bonfire program, we've issued one-thousand-and-ninety-six bonfire permits for this fiscal year, from October eighteen until the end of the season, which will start next budget year. We are looking at doing nightly patrols. We usually patrol them during the weekends, but just to keep them in compliance. And then we're going to look and do some follow-up inspections the next day to make sure they're cleaning up and doing what they're supposed to do. Community medic program. A couple of years ago, Vice Mayor Mark Breimer, you brought the Sea Fall Initiative in, which is the community's for a lifetime. We embraced that and had a fall prevention program, which has adapted into a community medic program. Currently, the community medic program sees one-hundred-and-forty-four patients. They are seen with one full-time community medic that oversees the program. Recently, you allowed us to hire a part-time community medic to take some of the burden, and two ship personnel that are seeing patients on overtime. This allows us to maintain a twenty-four-seven community medic program for on calls, after hours. We have a community medic cell phone that if anything arises, these patients know that they can call the cell phone twenty-four hours a day and get some answers to some questions, and get some help out there if they need. It's not a 911-based thing. Since October first of two thousand and eighteen, of the seven-hundred-and-eighty-four medical calls, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven were deemed as non-emergent and transferred to the community medic program. And of those, fifteen were completely turned over to the community medics. So the engine crew and the duty crews were able to go back in service and be ready for other calls. And that community medic was able to stay with them and work through whatever issues that they needed, without them having to be transported to the emergency room or something like that. We also, over last year, have reduced our fall-related incidents by seventeen percent over last year. The community medic program also offers classes. The Matter of Balance class is one of the reasons we have reduced our fall rates by seventeen percent. We've put on three classes so far this budget year. Sixteen students are maxed. The fourth class is scheduled for September two thousand and nineteen. There's already a waiting list for that class, so it's already full. So we'll definitely be putting on some more of those next budget years. We also have a chronic disease class, a diabetes management class, which teaches people with chronic diseases like diabetes how to kind of live with diabetes and all that. We have put on one of those classes with sixteen students this budget year. We have noted that participants maintain about fifteen percent more of the information if they're given, like, a pre-test, post-test kind of analysis. So far, last year, seventeen-eighteen, there were three-hundred-and-sixty-eight community medic visits that were done on enrolled patients. Already this year, we've done seven-hundred-and-twenty-two visits. Now, that's of the enrolled patients where they go and they're visiting people. That's over double over the one-year period. Next year, we're anticipating over a thousand community medic visits, with those community medics going to the houses and seeing these patients. The reason it doubled over one year, and then it kind of, it was definitely a steady incline but not doubling, is because the program is pretty saturated, so we're getting to the people that we need. But we're also educating these people to where we don't have to visit them as much if we've kind of stabilized them and it's going on. We don't have to go visit them as much. Also, we are noticing that some changes in demographics throughout the city is that the city is getting younger. I mean, it is a fact that the need is still there, but over the years, I think the need has kind of plateaued a little bit. Like the police academy, we recently put on our first Citizens Fire Academy. April fourth is when the first class was. We had twelve students who met eight nights, or eight times over seven weeks. They got to pull some hoses, they got to search for victims throughout the fire station. We did a big extrication demo on the last day, landed the first flight helicopter down, so they were able to participate in that. But they also went over EMS operations, and all twelve students were trained in CPR. So now we have twelve more people trained in CPR. This is going to be an annual event that we're going to be looking forward to putting on every fall. Getting into some community involvement. Our open house event in December, we had approximately two-thousand people. That's an estimate, we really, we were so busy, we really can't count. We had about two-thousand people. That's going to continue every year. I know most of you have been to them. Twilight Santa, which is, we visit every street for six nights in December and bring Santa to the community. We're going to continue our beach patrols. We try to do beach patrols on high-volume holiday weekends, like Memorial Day, Labor Day. We'll have a crew going up and down the beach on our ATV, looking for things. We've had some successful save of somebody drowning during one, that just happened to be at the right place at the right time. We're going to continue that on the holiday weekends. Satellite Cares, which started out as just an organization through the fire department, bringing Christmas to families, has expanded to an all-year-long food drive. So far, we've collected eight-hundred-and-forty-three pounds of food since January, and distributed it. And we estimate our goal for next year is about two-thousand pounds of food delivered out.
Which is actually weighed by Marza Kirby.
Yes. We have somebody who actually weighs every bag of food. That's how we track. Fire Department Training, training is super important to us. We encourage all of our personnel to go out and get degrees. Currently, two personnel have master's degrees, two have bachelor's degrees, and we have seven associate's degrees throughout the fifteen members of the department. We do, for ISO, have to do two live-fire trainings a year. That's all the personnel. We are working on doing that with other organizations. I'll get to that a little later. We also have in-station medical and service classes, and tech rescue refreshers with ropes and all that, which allowed us to do that rooftop rescue, because we're trained with the ropes. This current budget year, over three-hundred-and-fifty-four hours, which through the attendees at the National Fire Academy. Next year, we anticipate about four-hundred hours of education at the National Fire Academy, which is good because those classes are free, the airfare is stifened and free, the only lodging is free. The only impact to the city is just a meal ticket for a week, and there are phenomenal classes up there. We encourage all of our people to attend the NFA at least once a year, if possible. Other things that happened, Lisa Davis, our admin assistant, she became car seat certified. We've had a void for that for years. And since February, she's installed twelve. It's actually since, even since this is done, it's up to fourteen car seats. And as people come in, they'll show them how to safely attach their car seat, and she's trained legally to do it, so it's a pretty good thing. And all the command staff attended legal challenges for the fire service in Jupiter. We have four members of our department that are active participants in the Space Coast Fire Association throughout their EMS training, post-traumatic stress disorder, and operations committees. We've had a really, really good grant year. We also got a firehouse subs grant for sixteen-thousand dollars, which allowed us to purchase a battery-operated CPR compression machine, which is really phenomenal, which helps with our cardiac arrest survival rates. We got ninety-five thousand dollars through the firefighter assistance grant. Firefighter Nick Walsh was able to put in. We got the first round funded for five sets of bunker gear, helmets, boots. And the most important and expensive part was the SCBA, is the breathing apparatus that we wear. And then we got funded for round two. So we were able to get ten sets total through a grant. We also got a Department of Health grant for eight thousand dollars for the purchase of iPads for data collection and training on how to use all the data software to get all of our stuff uploaded to the state. So it's a good grant year. We hope to continue that for next year. The future, the community medic program is definitely going to evolve. Twenty-seven percent of city individuals live alone, and fifty-three percent are still sixty-five or older. Even though the population's getting younger, we still have that need. We're going to expand our training out, like we always do, the rope rescue, the confined space. Citizens Fire Academy is going to be in the fall annually. We had a void a couple of years ago with public education. Fireman Jim retired. Everybody remembers Fireman Jim from the commercials and the schools. And we've had that void, and it's been trouble finding that right individual to take over the public education. And we believe we finally have that person in the department who is not only going to do it, but he's passionate about it. So we really want to get our public education out there. I don't know if you'll see Fireman Kevin in commercials or not, but I'm pretty sure he's going to get in the schools a little more. Also, we're going to increase the neighboring department relations. We're doing a joint fire convention week with Patrick Air Force Base, trying to share our resources with the other departments. And training events, our live-fire training, we were able to do one with Indian Harbor Beach, to where we supply some live-fire training instructors we had, which cuts down on their cost. They rented the facility, which cuts down on our cost, and we're able to do our live-fire training jointly, and really drastically save some money. So on behalf of Chief Dave Abernathy, myself, and all the members of the Satellite Beach Fire Department, I'd like to thank you for your continuing support. It's been great over the years. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is my favorite picture, by the way.
My name's Carl Obama, and I'm the deputy building official. Can you go back? I want to introduce our small little staff. From left to right, that's Kelly Porter. She's our department coordinator and our code enforcement officer. Next to her is Nick Sanzon, our environmental programs coordinator. That's me on the ladder, John Stone, our director. And our news member is Krista Ellingson. She, that was the first day of her work, this first day, so we took a picture. And she's our admin. But that's our little group. We go to the next slide here. And these are the things that we are involved with. We process building permits, development review approval, provide code enforcement management, the community redevelopment agencies, planning environments. We have the boards, we have the planning advisory board, the board of adjustments, beautification board, sustainability board, and we also have our beautification board, sustainability board. And we also have our special mandate for code enforcement. We also have Nick, who is certified in geographic information systems, 3D location work. What is that exactly, Nick?
It's just mapping.
Exactly. And then on the next page, we kind of break down some of the things that we were doing this year. Our code enforcement. Last year, fiscal year, we had 263 code enforcement cases. Now we have 266 year-to-date. Those code enforcement cases are very labor-intensive. We have multiple visits to property, phone calls. We have letters. We have, if you go to the magistrate, we try to avoid that. The business tax receipts, we had 514 last year. We're only at 213 right now because we're in the process of re-doals. So that will go back up. Certificate of Occupancies. Last year, we had a total of 18. Thus far, we've had 32 certificate occupancies, which actually equates to over 80 because we have 54 additional COs at the South Building of Oceana. The appraisers are literally just not caught up with the address, so we don't know what place to put them. But they have been COed. The permits for all of last year that we issued were 2014. We're at 1,407 right now, which is a little bit lower than we were last year, but we're permitting larger projects. Therefore, we have fewer permits, but it doesn't affect our inspection rate. I mean, 1,407 permits means 1,407 permit reviews. And we've already completed over 2,500 inspections The next page is what we'll CO this year in the city of Satellite Beach. And the numbers after it are the ad valorem tax revenue that the city will see next year. We have Lansing Island. We have Montecito. Just a side note on Montecito, that new, this last phase gave us two new street names. We have Simeon and the best one in the city, Carlsbad Drive. But the big ones are Oceana, south and north. Oceana and south COed in March. And the clubhouse as well. The north building will CO in late August, early September with the additional 44 units of the 54 being COed as well. If you go down to the bottom here, this is an estimated additional revenue in fiscal year 2021 at $652,000. When you cut back to where we started, community development, past, present, and future, fiscal year 2018, 19, we received $12,475. And for 2019, 20, $22,180 in the additional revenue. That was on page six. But that's just a comparison to what these larger projects produce of more revenue. That's a lot of money right there.
So, real quick, Carl, I'm just going to interrupt you real quick. Just because when we have some of these projects popping up, I get that question a lot from the community is, you know, we're going to get all these taxes, right? And so, just to give you an idea, the Jackson dentist office is $12,180. And so if you take the dentist office, Villasiana, Lansing Island, the Jackson duplex, Caribbean, and Jamaica, and add all those together, that's $39,402. And that's basically the cost of our audits every year. So, you know, when we get, we don't really see a tax reduction, or we're not really able to do tax reductions until you see these larger projects. And that's, you know, so those smaller ones, while they're great, you know, the impact on the tax base isn't all that high.
And we have a second part of our little presentation. I'm Nick Sanzon. Hope to thank that.
Thank you, Carl. Thank you, Council. Again, I want to thank our team in community development. Carl has a lot of the codes and all the calls that come in. I do what I can to help to educate our residents, to help alleviate some of those code calls so they don't have to go as far as they may. What I'm going to be doing is discussing some of our achievements in the community development department, which were made possible by your support throughout the year, different projects and achievements that we've actually gotten to complete. We've completed eight out of 20 of the green achievement targets that were set out from the Sustainability Action Plan. So there is 20 of them that we're looking to achieve in the first five years. We've already achieved eight of those. We're right on target to complete the rest of them. And later on in this quarter, you're actually going to get an opportunity to look at some new proposed projects as well. One of the projects is the one that's powering City Hall right now. The power that we're using does actually go back to the grid, but it is clean power that we will then tap into to produce power for City Hall. And we have produced enough power to be net neutral with our power consumption. We're actually producing more power last month and the month before than we actually needed to use, which is very fantastic and good news. Thank you for supporting the solar program. And because you supported the solar program at Satellite Beach, FPL took notice of that and they went and assisted in constructing the FPL project at Ellican Park, which generates power, goes back to the grid, 25 kilowatts, which, as Councilman Dominic Montanaro does mention, that it was the first solar-powered concert. The power did go back to the grid. We pulled from that power, which the band played from the Ocean Reef Beach Festival last year. Next, we have the vehicles that we're driving. We have those as well. The electric vehicle charging station is out front. That electric vehicle charging station does generate a little bit of revenue, about 15 cents per kilowatt hour for those that are charging there. Myself is included in that. It's a great deal, and it has generated $525 in revenue, the three charging stations combined. So it's not a lot, but it's a little bit. Eventually, it'll pay for itself, and it'll all continue to last and actually generate some revenue, which is fantastic. So we did also create the Lobos Community Garden. A lot of you have been there and seen that and participated in it. There has been 36 participants over the past two years. We got almost full capacity the first year and almost full capacity the second year. Some residents have gotten two. One resident actually built us an additional bed, so now we technically have 21 beds, which is fantastic. As part of that, we did receive donations from the Botanical Interests, which is a seed company. They donated $4,000 in seeds, which we then gave back to the community at events and gave to our gardeners as well, which is a bonus for us. Let's see what we have now. We did talk a little bit about GIS with Carl. That's going to help us communicate with different departments and end up creating some interactive maps to be able to track a lot of our progress with projects and help different departments out with tracking their progress as they create new projects in the city. The next one is implementing a living homeowner shoreline project. There is funds available. There will be three of those within the year. If you know anybody that would like to take part in this program, please let people know that they can receive a one-to-one match of up to $500 to put in a living shoreline or bioswale to reduce their impact on the lagoon. This is all part of our sustainable practices and supporting those in both the city itself and with residents. We have the Sustainability Workshop Series, which number 17 is this month. We'll be talking about community involvement. Once a month in this room, I go ahead and give a workshop. Some of you have attended those. Thank you very much. And we've had over 100 people attend those workshops. Some of the best attended have been native plants and recycling, two of the best ones so far. We've also, we defined and implemented the Starry Skies green achievement target. It was once called Dark Skies, but to make it more effective and applicable within the city and an urban environment, we went ahead and, with the Sustainability Board's direction, created Starry Skies, which is being implemented. And basically, you're not going to see too many changes within the city. Externally, a lot of that will be internal with putting timers on lights and shields on lights and making sure that we're not producing any extra light at night so that our residents can get a better view of the stars in the sky, because we do live on the Space Coast. From that, hopefully, our residents and businesses will take these pieces of information to heart and do like we do and follow in our footsteps and do some more sustainable practices. We do collaborate with many nonprofits. One of them is Keep Bavard Beautiful. And as Councilman Dominic Montanaro was recognized for that project with our local contributors. One of them is Ethan Shoda, thank you very much, who has been doing that for years. We promote it on Facebook. We show up. We promote it at our workshops and Sustainability Board meetings and talk about it to try to get people to show up. And we also do some of them on our own accord. And we'll be growing that in the future, maybe with an adaptive road program. There's also the DeSoto Bioswale Project. If you've driven up and down DeSoto, you've seen that. We're implementing Phase 3. Phase 1 was the plants in the median, just next to Kailan, Jamaica. The stormwater ponds next to the library have had vegetation installed to reduce the impact of those stormwater ponds. The more nutrients are absorbed, the more habitat is created. The next phase will be the open ditch area on DeSoto towards the east end where more native plants will be installed. And we'll be doing another planting here in the next month or two with some students from FIT, and then including more of the Satellite High School students, usually from the Sustainability Board that just got created there. That DeSoto Bioswale Project had an educational component that had grants that were provided from the DEP. We recently received the funding to reimburse us from that grant, so that grant is closed out. The NEP grant that we received funding for the plants is still ongoing. We did receive a portion of the funding that paid for the first phase of that. There are other things that we're working on to reduce our impacts to the Indian Harbor Lagoon and the environment, which recently approved the NEP grant for the oyster project on Sampson's. And we did receive partial funding for that. We're looking to receive the rest of that funding later in the fiscal year, depending on how their budget cycle goes. Like I did mention, the establishment of the middle school Sustainability Board was a great success. Such a great success that Maisie Gerton from that Sustainability Board had graduated and moved on to Satellite, where she then went on to inspire them to create the Sustainability Board of Satellite High School. So now we have a Satellite High School Sustainability Board, which will most likely live a little bit longer than the junior high one, just because they're there for more years. That is going on and has been a great success. I did skip over one thing, which is the implementation of no styrofoam at city functions for the vendors and for ourselves alike, and no plastic straws. That was put forward through an ordinance and a resolution. Through the ordinance, we created Article 8 Environmental Protections that prohibits styrofoam at city events. So while I'm at those events, I walk around and talk to vendors and make sure that they're adhering to the agreements that they've signed with PASTY over at REC. So I'd like to thank you all again for all your support for the projects that we do to create a sustainable environment for our city and our residents, to increase their quality of life. Without your support, that wouldn't be possible. Also, without the support of Public Works, all of our projects wouldn't be successful or implemented as well. So I want to personally thank the Public Works staff for all the help that they provide for a lot of the projects that I do. And I'll pass it off to Alan Potter. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. Hopefully, I'll get through this without coughing. I've got a little cold going, so. But nice to see you all this evening. And just going to quickly go through the Public Works Department. I didn't break it down into what we do every day because I do believe all of you know, you know, that we touch everything. So I just want to highlight some of the achievements that we had this year, some of the great things that we're doing. We've had a very busy year so far. And we're looking to continue to have a busy, busy next couple of years, actually. So that being said, what we did was, we completed all elements of the DeSoto Stormwater Park, which included the quarter-mile walking trail, the kayak launch. And we're working on a fine grant right now. Assistant Manager Alwarchi went and did a presentation for the fine folks. And I think she wowed them. So we're probably going to get some money out of that deal. So, and that's for an ADA launch to go on with what we have there. We also have the multi-generational exercise equipment that is used daily. I go by there every morning and I see folks out there. We've had a couple of issues with rust. We did have the company come out and they fixed a lot of that issue. They replaced a lot of parts. So I think we're good there. And we're hoping to get some solar lighting around that so that in the fall and in the winter time, when folks want to get out and do some things, they can do it without fear of, you know, anything going on out there and be able to see what they're doing. The Public Works Department itself, we completed a lot of that project on our own. And it was, you know, pretty much in-kind matching. The recreational trails grant that we received, we had to come up with a match. And that was part of our match, all the work that we did out there. We built all the paths for the exercise equipment, built all the paths for the trash can, recycling bins. The grounds crew planted all of the new vegetation that's out there, plants, trees, everything. And then we had those couple storms, newly planted trees got blown over. So they went out and re-secured them. And so hopefully, they'll take root before we have anything big and knock wood. We don't have to worry about any the H-word this year. So. We did stock the pond with 1,000 bluegill and shell cracker type fish. And we also have 4,000 little guppies out there. And I hate to say it, but most of it is going to be food for the other fish. So, but they have to eat. We're also working to control the vegetation that's out there through natural techniques. We're working on a permit to put triploid carp in the pond. The carp will eat the vegetation. They're sterile fish, so they can't reproduce in case they were to get out into the lagoon because they'd go out there and wreak havoc on the seagrass, which is, we know, is the big driver in the lagoon issues. That, you know, we can't get seagrass to grow. And if we let triploid carp go out there, they'll, you know, make it a bigger issue. Some pictures of guys working out there and how nice it looks when you're just kind of approaching the park with the fountain going. Looks really nice at night, too. Last year, y'all increased the stormwater utility rate. And that has really helped us fund some of the projects that were identified in the stormwater master plan updated in 2018. You can see that DeSoto is pretty tore up right now, Temple and Elm. And that project is moving along well. We've had some hiccups, waste management-wise and roadblock-wise. But other than that, Robert Santibrino out there, he does a fantastic job working with the residents, working with the contractor, making sure everybody's happy. And, you know, I had him go today to work to talk to somebody about something completely different over on Rosada. It wasn't even our project. But he went over there, handled it, and, you know, he's just, he has a way. He has a gift, I guess. But, and then in the planning stages for next fiscal year is, we're starting to work on the design for Park Avenue, stormwater work. And potential improvements include that stormwater work, resurfacing, insulation of sidewalks and curving. The curving that's in place now is in very bad shape. So it would be a total redesign of that curb and And here, you can see exactly the limits of the project that's now ongoing. You know, you can say, well, from Temple, from DeSoto to Elm, but if you look, that's quite a lot of pipe being laid right there and replaced. So, next slide, please. And this is the condition of the pipe. If you see the picture on the left, you can see how badly deteriorated that pipe is. So it's probably three-quarters of the way filled with sand and falling apart. And the sidewalks were in bad shape because it was all underneath the sidewalk. So the sand gets washed into the pipes that now has voids in it. And you have voids under the sidewalk that allow movement and cracking and driveways and things like that. So, and the top picture there is the replacement pipe going across Rosada at DeSoto. And we've done a lot of different projects this year, just with in-house resources, not contracted out. We've done a lot of renovations here at City Hall, the community redevelopment office area, the City Hall offices. We rebuilt four offices at the fire department and painted the common areas over there. And they're pretty happy about that. On the roads, we, as you can see, we've done a lot of sidewalk work, curb and gutter work. We did, the sidewalk trip hazards is a big one. We purchased a grinder, I want to say 10 years ago. And if the elevation of the trip hazard is like a half inch, you can remove that without having to replace the sidewalk. Replacing the sidewalk is not cheap. And so, you know, between the concrete and the labor and everything else. So we've probably saved, I can't really put a number to it right now. I could if I sat down and figured it out. But I know that the machine itself paid for itself in the first year. So I think that was a $4,000 machine, and we figured that it paid for itself in that one year. So. that one year, so. And then the potholes and small road repairs that we do with asphalt. And later on, I'm going to go over the, the challenges we faced with the roads, because most of the stuff that's here has been done by, by three or now two people. So, and then we repaired drainage at the end of Sunrise Avenue. It was an old chain link fence that connected Satellite, or Sunrise Avenue to Library. The drainage area there was washed out, so we replaced that pipe going into that area and across the walkway, re-asphalted the walkway, and took the fence out and just put some bollards in there, and it looks much, much nicer. And due to the, the, the police chief touched on this, but due to the purchase of the new vehicles and the lease of the Public Works vehicles, we probably, you know, approximately, and it's even conservative number, fifteen percent savings on our vehicle maintenance budget. That allows us to spend that extra money on repainting vehicles that are badly in need of repainting. They still are useful vehicles, but they look bad. So, you know, you can still put them on the street. They look good, and it doesn't cost you much more, you know, to, to do that. The, and then, of course, we live on the beach, and we're going to have minor rust issues, so before they become major rust issues, we can get them over there and get them taken care of. And, you know, vehicle bodywork is not cheap, so we, we like to get it done as quickly as we can. And also, many of the small tools that we use, weeders, edgers, concrete saws, things like that, you know, the, the funding that's provided to us, that we can replace those things or, you know, get them fixed. We've gone to the non-ethanol fuel at the, at the department, because we were experiencing a lot of breakdowns in the equipment because of the ethanol in the gas. The seals were swelling and things like that, so we decided to go with non-ethanol, which has helped us greatly. But, you know, you use these things every day, and at some point, they break down, so the ability to replace them is, is key. Now, larger equipment like the backhoe and the five-deck mower, they've exceeded their useful life. You know, we've put, we put a great deal of money into the backhoe last year, and, you know, that's going to continue. So we've put that into the CIP. The, the five-deck mower is in the CIP for next year. Hopefully, we can get that replaced. That mower helps us save a lot of time and money mowing the bigger fields, like the soccer fields and the baseball fields and the football fields. So that's, that's an essential piece of equipment. And then other equipment that we think would be helpful in, in doing our job, mini excavator and, and other things like that, we've put in the CIP for out years to be considered for funding. Well, the new Public Works building is now in the design phase, and everybody's, the joke I made the other day, everybody's getting new, new phones. And they said, well, you'll get your new phones when, when you get your new building. And I said, that'll be my last act as Public Works Director. I'll pick up the phone, and I'll say, I've got the new phone system. Goodbye. So, but yeah, I'm looking forward to a new building. Everybody that I work with is looking forward to a new building, too, because we have, we've run out of space. We, you know, we're in a, using a building that's been condemned, and because it's the only place we could go. And, you know, it's just, we are tapped out. So the, and we know that upgrading the infrastructure has been one of your priorities, and we've really been concentrating on getting that done. So, you know, the master plan that we've looked at, and, and some of the key areas that I would like to see taken care of are in that plan, we know that there are places in the city that people deal with water during heavy storms or even, even mediocre storms. They deal with water backup, and we would love to get those people relieved. So we're working towards that end, and you, you know, that increase in the stormwater utility has really, really enabled us to, to move that, in that direction.
And we are getting a lot of calls now for areas of the city that we had not been getting calls before. And so that's part of the plan, is putting conveyance systems in areas of the city that don't have any flood attenuation at all. So there's, there's still pockets of the city that, that
Right.
We're high enough in elevation that they, they really didn't need a lot of conveyance, but now it's getting to the point where they do. And so, so we have that budget, you know, put in the master plan, and we're probably going to have to talk about moving it up a little bit because of their concerns.
Yeah, and, and it seems, and I could be wrong, but it seems as though these storms are becoming much more intense. You know, they're dropping a lot of rain in a very short period of time, and you just can't build a system big enough to deal with that in, in, you know, a mile and a quarter between the ocean and the beach. I mean, the ocean and the river. So, you know, we, we've got to do a little bit here, a little bit there to try to get folks relief. Road paving is also a necessity in many areas of the city. We have a plan in place to hopefully get the, get the funding together to do a, a large project in three to five years. That, you know, you get more bang for your buck if you do, you know, five, six miles of road as opposed to one mile of road. And then Phase Two of the Civic Center improvements, we'll be meeting on Friday with the engineer and architect to get that going again. We had a little hiccup in that process due to the school board having overriding authority on, on our architect, but we're moving again, so hopefully, we'll get that completed by, by the middle of next year at least.
We're running into a challenge with the election and having that facility under construction, because Lori uses, you know, that for one of our polling stations, so we have the primary in March, and, you know, so that's going to be a challenge.
And as I touched on a little earlier, you know, we have two guys on the road crew. I've been, we, we lost one fella, and we've been trying to replace him for at least four months, and we're just not getting applications. You know, and there's a, there's a myriad of reasons why, and I'm not going to go into all that, but I am going to say that we're not the only ones. You know, the, the police department is trying to hire some, a dispatcher and can't get applications. Other cities are facing the same challenges that we're facing. So it's not just Satellite Beach. It's, it's, you know, I think it's nationwide. You know, everybody's working, and so when they look at what you can pay them, and, you know, even though the benefit package might be there, you know, single guys, I, I can't eat benefits. I, I can, you know. So anyway, that's one of our challenges. And, and so we're, we looking at adding a new position next year, and then maybe incentivizing some of our other guys that have the knowledge and skill. We've built tiers into the pay plan, so hopefully, we can incentivize those folks to, to step up and maybe move them up and give them a little bit more money, and maybe the word spreads that, you know, you can make more money if you go out there and work for it, you know.
Are you down one?
We're down, actually, we're going to be down two. We just had another fellow resign. He's, he's retiring. So we'll be down two in two weeks, unless we replace, we can replace.
And the one that we're down now is a pretty important one,
Right.
Because it's a part of a three team, a three-person team for, for basically concrete works and things like that.
Right. They do all the concrete. They do all the potholes, and, you know, and we have one, one person that can drive the back truck. We need somebody with a CDL license and, you know, and things like that, and, and that comes with a price, you know.
So it's a very specific, you know, skill set that's hard to find.
Right. And then storage space. You drive around the city, you're going to see spots here and there where stuff, where we, where we put things. Back here is one, and the sports park is another. We have piles of millings that we use to, to do some road repair. We have dirt that they use to top dress fields. We, and all the palm fronds that the guys collect. Over, you know, the week, they pile them down there, and there's a big dumpster down there. We put it in there, and waste management hauls away and brings it back. But that is the only place left that we have that we can use, because we used to use De Soto for some days, but now De Soto's a beautiful park, and we're not, we're not putting piles of, of, you know, dirt down our beautiful new park. So that's one of our struggles, is, is just finding, finding places for things. And the new building, I think, will help alleviate some of that, and what we do with the old building may also help alleviate some of that. So.
We're hoping to get this out of the sports park with that project, because the sports park is also one of our most beautiful parks, too.
Well, yeah.
He hears it when I drive through it, like, oh.
Yeah. So, and with that, I, I really do, you know, on behalf of the department, want to thank you guys for all of your support over the years, past council supports. Frank and Mark, Dominic, you guys have been on past councils where we've had your support, and then both of you, thank you very much. We couldn't do it without it.
Thanks, Alan, very much.
I'm going to try and fly through these. Okay, I'm with the Recreation Department. You guys mind me? Some of our primary functions is to provide quality programming for all ages to residents of Satellite Beach and the surrounding areas. We do about 7,000 registrations annually, so those are in our classes, camps. You'll see that forty-five percent Satellite Beach residents, fifty-five percent non-resident. The draw for non-residents is really the summer camps that we offer, because we offer so many and such a wide variety. And by non-residents, it's close communities, you know, unincorporated, Var, just north of us, Indian Harbor Beach, Indian Atlantic, Melbourne. Those are really where those non-residents are coming from. And all of those programs generate revenue, and the expenses for those programs are offset by that revenue that we bring in.
Basically cancels it out.
Right. We manage the use of the city's rental facilities by individuals. We do about 3,000 rentals annually. So that's facilities like Pelican Beach Park Pavilions, the Clubhouse, the David R. Schechter Community Center, multiple rooms there, and the Civic Center. The Clubhouse is such a popular rental facility that it rents about twelve to fourteen months in advance. And we just had somebody call the other day for 2022, December 2022. So it's booking pretty far out. It's funny, because we'll get phone calls that are like, do you have this Saturday available? We're like, this year? No. We staff multiple recreation facilities and oversee the proper use of those facilities by the public. So those are, you know, your dog park, your skate park, tennis courts, the gym, Sampson's Island, when we have access to the island. And we partner with a lot of local organizations to offer various community events throughout the year. This is a list of all of our recreation facilities in the city. It is not a short list. The Public Works Department works really hard to maintain all of these facilities to the standards and the expectations of all of our users. It can be a challenge for them, because the facilities are getting older. There's continuous use of all of these facilities, just ongoing, with little to no rest time for any of them to get some of these projects done and improvements done to those.
And that's, you know, particularly with our fields, we have such a pressure on our field use that it's getting to the point where I'm calling Indian Harbor Beach begging them to build soccer fields, because we have, just soccer has exploded. We have lacrosse now. We have, you know, the, the Little Flag Football. I mean, and these programs are so popular that, you know, you don't want to say no, but our fields are really suffering, particularly, you know, the softball. And even the football doesn't complain as much, but the field condition of, of all the fields are getting to the point, just because simple, simply because they're overused.
Right. So this is a list of all of our annual events offered within Satellite Beach, utilizing city facilities and/or coordinated by the city. This accounts for about thirty-seven weekends out of the year that we have at least one, if not multiple, events going on, as time was saying, hopefully.
So the rec department during the summer, if you go in there, all you hear is screaming. I'm, I'm not kidding. And I, and so they listen to screaming for about three months. And then they go straight into the fall, where they work literally every weekend.
But it's a little quieter during the weekend.
Yeah, it's a little quieter.
All of those events are provided with help from community partners like the Women's Club, the Lions Club, Bervard Zoo, Keep Bervard Beautiful, you know, Five Ks through Like to Write Love in Our Arms, those kinds of things, the athletic league, EV Car People, Fifty-Five Five. So looking back on this fiscal year, we added a part-time athletic facility coordinator to help us with managing the fields and the overuse of those fields by our athletic leagues and outside organizations. We're trying to reduce the wear and tear on those play surfaces. It's helped a, a lot so far. We've been able to, you know, not scare away, but, you know, prevent some groups that come over when their facilities get closed elsewhere, you know, over in Biara or something. They come over and use our fields, because it's just open all the time. So we've added some signage, which has helped cut down on those unauthorized groups. So that's been huge, having her. She's also, you know, a connection between the Public Works Department, who gets done at 3:30, and the leagues that don't start until the evening, you know, be in that communication to tell them, hey, this field got treated today. You need to move over to this field. Stop playing in the same area, you know. They've, they've said, we need to let this, this field rest, and move over and use this other part of the field. So that's been awesome having her. Facility improvements, we've seen this, you know, through Alan's presentation with Public Works. You know, these facilities have all had some improvements done to them, which are much needed. These are all revenue generating facilities, so we're continuing to make improvements there. We did recently purchase a pontoon boat, which will help us to help the Recreation Department and the Public Works Department to maintain Sampson's Island Nature Park and provide transportation for the public. And we continue to, you know, find niche programs that people are really interested in, and offer more and more. I think we added probably four or five more skate camps this year than we had last year. Every single one of them sold out. There were waiting lists. So we, when we see that there's something that's really popular, you know, we, we try and add as many of those programs as we can, so we can get as many people in them as we can. Looking at the future, we've done a lot of improvements to facilities, but there's still a lot more that can be done. We want to continue to improve, you know, all of these aging facilities and, and.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Because they are heavily used. They're really popular facilities, so, so we want to continue to keep, you know, making those improvements. Bonfire permits, we are proposing a transition of the permit process from the fire department to the Recreation Department the fall of this year. Kind of makes sense, because all of the facility contracts are done over there. The field permits are done over there, so you're kind of all in one spot. It works with the software that we already have, so we don't need additional software to do that. We are hoping to move the printing, to begin printing the seasonal recreation brochure in-house. Typically, we've sent that out for printing, and so we're going to try to do more of that in-house, reduce costs and expenses there. The rec department is going to assist with establishing the new youth council, which is a city board, and help them develop goals and engage the youth in the community. And we will continue to seek out and apply for recreation grants to enhance our facilities.
Can I put, jump in real quick? So the activity brochures, and I don't know if you guys recall us talking about replacing all the copiers, and that was something that Liz took on, where all of the departments had different copiers with different contracts. So it was a real pain to, to deal with, because she, she got them all under one and replaced all of them at a lesser cost, but with features that the rec department all of them at a lesser cost, but with features that the rec department, for example, can print out their own brochures. We can print out pretty high colored maps. So it's got features that all the departments use now at a lesser cost. So I just wanted to point that out. That was, that was done this past year.
And that wraps it up for me. I know all the other departments have emphasized, you know. Thank you guys for your support. I know you guys all know how important recreation is to, you know, quality of life and so thank you for your continued support of our Recreation Department. And I'll turn things back over to Courtney.
Thank you.
All right.
I say thank you. Courtney?
So some of the budget highlights in the proposed budget is reducing our millage rate from 8.8212 to 8.7. And this would allow for a lot of the capital improvements that we're going to go over in a minute. But we were, we are not recommending any increase of a stormwater ERU rate. We are recommending a 3% COLA for all employees. We were able to negotiate a no increase in our health insurance and that's largely because of the, I think a lot with our bidding process that we tend to do every year, in addition to the fact that we have the health clinic. And the health clinic is reducing the claims that are hitting the plan. So that's helping us keep our, our health insurance plan down. We have implemented, this will be the final year for the salary survey implementation. Sometimes when we do these salary surveys, the cost is too high for us to incur in one year, so we try to split it up and that's what we've done in the past two years. We also allocated $100,000 to the hurricane expense line item, so that's in your budget. This year, we're transferring, we're recommending to transfer $450,000 from the general fund to the capital assets fund. And this is just further demonstrating that the capital assets revenue is simply not generating enough money to keep up with the capital assets of the city. It may in future years after we catch up on the renewed maintenance. So that might happen, but we're just not seeing that right now. Right now, it's a pretty hefty transfer. And we have, with the union, have now agreed to the 50-50 split of the 175, 185 money. So the city will get half of that to pay down pensions and the union will get half of that to go into their 401As. So that's been negotiated in their contracts. So that's reflected in the budget.
Just out of curiosity, the final year of the salary survey implementation thing, what was that, that, what's that number?
A dollar figure.
You did just a ballpark dollar figure.
It's about 2%. You get 3% for the COLA and another 2% for the.
Okay. All right.
And that really affected fire, police, and public works is what primarily, the lower rung positions, you know, entry level. And then also wanted to make sure, just going, talking about some of the things that we were concerned about this year, one of them was the fire workers comp issue with the cancer bill. We're very fortunate to have the League of Cities as a resource because their program made that incredibly affordable. In fact, we were very worried about it, very concerned, actually even thinking about having to open up union negotiations again. And then we got the numbers from the Florida League and went, "Okay." So it's funded, it's in your budget, but it was, it was a low enough cost that it didn't, it didn't hurt us, so.
It was something that we talked about at the last pension trust meeting at the state level. They were working on this.
Incredibly fortunate that we have them. And our insurance carrier was not doing that. So, so we will be entering into a new agreement with the league for that purpose.
Right.
Okay, go ahead.
So some of the other things that we talk about when we talk about the budget is the different transfers between funds and kind of the reasons why behind them. So the stormwater is going to transfer to the general fund a little over $250,000 and that's really strictly due to the payroll of the stormwater employees that pays out of the general fund. So the stormwater fund just reimburses the general fund for those payroll costs. Has the city manager mentioned the general fund is going to fund the capital assets $450,000? General fund will pay the CRA 1.4, that's from the, the property taxes that gets transferred over. The general fund to the CRA for the repayment, a little over $35,000. And due to the fact that the CRA is shutting down this fiscal year and we're not having any additional projects, the excess is obviously a lot larger this year than it has been in years past. Because all the things that's going to happen in the CRA fund this year is the revenues will come in, we'll pay the debt, and then the excess will go back to the vaccine authorities.
So by statute, we have to pay the CRA? So that'll happen until the debt service is, is finished at the end of the, 20, 26, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
2026.
2026. And we always talk about, I know that date so well because we talk about having a party every time. We know that it's going to end, but the, by statute, we have to pay it, then we pay the debt service, and then the excess from that goes back to the taxing authorities. So that's why you see it go in and then come out. So we just, it's just something we have to do.
Just to clarify, all of that $1,071,000 doesn't come to the city. Part of it goes to the county.
No, this is the city's contribution.
This is the city's contribution then?
Correct.
Now, the county has their own and then, you know, that goes, they pay their share of the debt service and then that goes back to them.
The next slide is, is showing you all of the funds across the board for the whole entire budget. So at the top, you have all the general fund revenues and then you have all of the other fund revenues and then all of the, the uses by category, whether it's personnel, operating, capital, lay debt service, for the total of 23 million as a total budget. Then we just take that and we break it out into a little pie chart to kind of show you the percentages for each of the funds by revenue. Do the same with the expenditures. So you can see general fund always is typically the largest one. This following slide is the projected fund balance for the general fund. So estimated at the end of this fiscal year, 18, 19, has almost $800,000 in it and then it's estimated by the end of fiscal year 19, 20 to have a little over 1.1. So making progress. The following slide is the fund balances for all of the other smaller funds, the community service funds, the stormwater, the law enforcement, obviously the CRA doesn't ever carry a fund balance, and then the, the capital assets fund. The following slide is the, the city's debt. You can see where, how much loan was that we originally took out, the principal that will, that will be paid in 19, 20, principal and interest for 19, 20, and then the outstanding principal that's left, and then of course the expected payout date. So you can see in fiscal year 20, 21, we will be reducing a couple and taking a couple of these debt payments off completely.
So I just wanted to, to make sure you understood that in this budget, we are anticipating or we have, we have added in the 3.5 million for the Public Works Building and then we are anticipating the one on your agenda later this evening. So it's, it is budgeted as a, as a debt service. And also the, there has been some discussion on social media that the city doesn't have, apparently they're misinterpreting a charter provision, but the city's, by the charter, the city's debt capacity is 40 million and our debt burden is 10. So we have, we're not violating our charter in any way, shape, or form. And I'll explain that better at the meeting if that comes up, but I just wanted to make sure that if you hear that, that's the response basically is we're, we're well below our debt capacity.
I just have a quick question. You said that this 10 million includes the debt we're going to be taking on. Okay, which, which one of these?
Those are the last two. So you see the 3.5 is the original loan amount and that's the one you have approved for the Public Works and the one right below that is on your agenda for this evening.
Okay.
Oh, it's, okay. And I think, you know, just, we'll, we'll talk about it again later, but, but we wanted to emphasize that, you know, some of these are, you know, taking a loan for a building is not unusual at all. And, and now it's becoming to the, it's getting to the point where taking loans out for large maintenance issues is not unusual either, largely because construction costs are rising faster than the interest rates we're paying for a loan. So we've done that analysis and our interest rates that we're getting are so much lower than the construction price inflation indexes. So if we saved for that, we would actually be paying more later to do it than we are today. And we're, we're not running into problems with, that you run into when you let a facility go so long, it costs more later to, to fix it, so.
Can I ask what the 2015 utility tax note?
That was.
That was for and what the 2018 one was for?
Yep, that was for the 2015, the city did Roosevelt. And part of the funding for DeSoto Park came out of that.
Okay.
We did some resurfacing, but Roosevelt was the primary project.
Okay. And how about the 2018 one?
In 2018, that we wrapped in previous debts, so we refinanced.
Okay.
And that was a property purchase.
Fire truck.
In the fire truck.
Okay. Thank you.
So as each of the departments spoke, they, they touched upon some of the capital improvements, but these, these are all the ones that are funded in this current proposed budget. So kind of just to highlight them, obviously, we're going to continue the stormwater replacement plan. Park Avenue, there's some new fire department equipment in there, Public Works equipment. Alan spoke about the, the five-deck mower, the DRS gym floor, some ball field fencing, air conditioner maintenance and replacement, and then obviously the Public Works Fire Station Building. So those are all things that are currently in this proposed budget. So just to kind of, to end this, growing a healthy community was this year's budget theme. It was chosen as a way to represent the city's leadership and community for a lifetime, sustainability, and promoting a healthy lifestyle. Our citizens and their ability to feel comfortable and safe at a home are top priority. The city's fire department's community medic program provides medical checks to our seniors at home. The police department volunteer stop-by-and-say-hi program gives an opportunity for seniors to be visited and checked on in their own home. DeSoto Park is completed with amenities for all ages. That includes a walk-in trail and exercise equipment adjacent to the tennis courts and racquetball area. The city will continue to work towards building our healthy community.
And so before we get questions, I just wanted to follow up with some of the things, the theme that you're hearing and that's a lot of the departments are, you know, very thankful, grateful for your support. And that's, you know, a, a thing that I heard a lot in the staff meetings is, wow, you know, we're really lucky to have the council we have and that, you know, if, if they have a problem, they're respectful and let us know and we get it done, but they're very supportive of, of our efforts and, and they're very supportive of the staff and they wanted to thank you and I want to thank you for everything you do for us. So we appreciate you more than you probably realize.
Thank you. Thank you to all the staff for your hard work and all the department heads. Great job. Just to say this is the first of the process of budget. It's not going to be the last time we talked about it. So as the charter goes, our city manager proposes a budget no later than the first meeting in August. And then we will set the tentative millage rate, which is here for tonight. And again, we can set it, we can always drop it lower than that millage rate. Then we're going to hold two public hearings in September on it. We'll also have council resolution for the stormwater on August 7th and then we'll have public hearings the 4th and the 18th of September on the budget. So this isn't the first time this will be presented. This is just the start of the process, okay? Before I open up for public, council, any questions to staff at this point?
Just so I can get caught up. The stormwater fee last year, you raised, was it raised from 100 to 200?
That's correct. 104 to 200, yeah.
I'm sorry?
104 to 200, yeah.
Oh, it was 104, okay. And staffing needs from police, fire, are those in?
Mm-mm.
Okay. Did the Public Works want the present one?
There's one for Public Works and that's the only staffing increase that we have for personnel.
Okay.
Further questions? Okay, here are none at this time. Open up for public comment on the proposed budget. Here are none. Bring it back to council. Move on to agenda item three, which, which is to set the millage rate. Do I have a motion?
Senator.
Thank you. I have a motion by Councilwoman Gibson, second by Councilman Montanaro.
I think we should put the figure in there.
Please, yes.
Put the motion. Let's make it. Whatever it is.
I'd like to amend my motion to, you're going to set the tentative millage rate, to set the tentative millage rate to.
8.7.
Ready to go?
8.7.
8.7.
I'll amend my second, second half.
Accepted. Further discussion from council? Since this is another agenda item, I'll open up for public comment on the millage. Here are no public comment. Back to council. Any further from councils?
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
And Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
And Mayor Kucina.
Yes, motion passes. Any further business for the special meeting staff? Courtney, thank you very much. I know we'll be working on this for the next month and a half and to our staff for your jobs you do this year for us and for always really incredible when you look at this and see all you do. Thank you.
We brought you dinner too, so you have 10 minutes to eat in them.
Right, thank you. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Reconvene seven. Yeah. Jody? What is the council meeting right now? Before we do. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order. The city, a regular city council meeting, the City of Satellite Beach, July 17th, 2019, approximately 7:00 PM. Please join Vice Mayor Breimer for a moment of silence and the pledge. Please rise for a moment of silence. Okay, thank you if you join me with the pledge.
I pledge to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. At this time, we're going to make a couple adjustments to the council agenda. We're going to do the presentation of proclamations. There will be a change, agenda item 11 has been pulled and we'll move agenda item nine up after the city managers, managers' report. Okay. 11's been taken off, nine will be moved up. At this time, we have two presentations. Councilwoman Rosicky will do the official symbol of kindness with the group. Group, please come up, all you people with it, and Councilwoman Rosicky will read it.
So we have, this is Will Cox, who is the TK teacher at Tropical Elementary School. You call your group the Tropical Kingdom. And these are some of your former students.
I have my, my last year's students. I have two years ago and three years ago.
Okay.
And you.
And you. And we also have Mrs. Tina Deskovic from the school board and I want to share a proclamation. Whereas there is a symbol for peace, love, and happiness, and whereas there is a need in our schools, our communities, our nation, and our world for more kindness, and whereas the Tropical Kingdom, TK1, from Tropical Elementary School, Merritt Island, Florida, believes that helping others become aware of kindness will generate more kindness. And whereas the Tropical Kingdom determined having a symbol for kindness would help make people more aware of kindness in their everyday lives. And whereas the Tropical Kingdom held a vote to choose a kindness symbol. And whereas 983 people from 25 states as well as England and Ireland voted with 52% choosing the kindness, kindness all around symbol of kindness, which is what's on your shirt. So now therefore, on behalf of Frank P. Catino, mayor of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, I do hereby proclaim the kindness all around symbol as it is. In witness thereof. He signed this and sealed it on the 17th day of July, 2019. In witness thereof, he signed this and sealed it on the 17th day of July, 2019. Thank you. Am I allowed to address the council?
Thank you.
Is this on?
It is.
Okay. We just want to thank the city council and the city manager and the assistant city manager for inviting the students out to share their symbol of kindness. As we all know, the world today could use a little more kindness, and so thank you for adopting and recognizing them and letting us be part of this.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
Thank you, Tina. That's it, we have one more tonight, and it's, you don't know Cassie and you? Sorry. The rec center, the rec and parks in our town is a very huge part of our town. It always has been, even well before the times that we started buying up beach property, we had Sampson Island Park, and parks have always been a big thing. And Cassie's like having a thousand kids every day, it's yours. When you go to the rec center and the parks around here during the summer, the programs are incredible. So this is a little proclamation for you guys.
So with the recognition of my Stevenson Island Board Chairman and Rec Board Ricky, so Steve Osmer, everybody else.
Thank you. Okay, whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout the country, including Satellite Beach, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthier, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation services for those who are mental or physically disabled, and also improves the mental and emotional health of all citizens, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improves the quality of the air we breathe, provides vegetation buffers to development, and produces habitat for wildlife, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas the City of Satellite Beach recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I, Franklin Catino, the mayor of the City of Satellite Beach, do hereby proclaim the month of July as Parks and Recreation, and thank you very much, here is your official proclamation, and thank you guys for serving on the boards and the work you do with it. If you've never been to our parks, I can tell you, you're missing out, they're pretty amazing, how many we have. I think it's 150 acres in our city are parks. So, thank you guys.
Thank you again.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you. I want a shirt.
I know. Okay, at this time, we'll go back to agenda item three, citizens' comments. This is for non-agenda items. Non-agenda items, citizens first. The podium's open. Hearing none, close of citizens' comments.
You got one.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir, I apologize, I didn't see you. Raise your hand. Thank you.
Chris Montana?
Chris Montana?
Milton.
Thank you.
I was just coming by, I was told that you guys were going to discuss some of the things going on within the city of the development, but I don't see anything on the agenda about that.
No, that was misinformation, to be very honest with you. The agenda for council is posted on our website.
Okay.
Other than what, and I just ask you, don't take Facebook as the gospel of what's on our agenda.
Right.
By law, we have to post it.
Right.
And if you would, just go to the website and you will be able to see what the agenda is. Courtney, do you have anything?
Yeah, I think people might be mixing up, on Tuesday, July 23rd, that's next week, we will have a workshop with the public on growth and development in the city, and so we're going to kind of give a history of what we've approved, and, you know, talk about some of the climate resiliency initiatives that we're going to be, you know, proposing to the public and get some feedback from the public. So it's more of a workshop than anything and kind of relax, so that'll be, that meeting's on July 23rd at the Schecter Center.
Okay.
And then we have another one on August 1st at the library, so if you can't meet, you know, and you should get a postcard in the mail any day now if you're a resident of the city.
What time on the 23rd?
They're at 6 o'clock, and so July 23rd at 6 o'clock at the DRS Center.
Okay.
And on Thursday, August 1st at 6 o'clock at the Satellite Beach Library. And both of the presentations will be exactly the same, you might hear different discussion because of the people that are there, but the presentations are the same.
Okay.
The postcards were mailed out, because I got mine last week.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know, I don't know if it's getting, everything that gets mailed out.
And a great resource is our website.
Website?
Yes, sir.
Oh, that's on the website too.
Or just call us.
Yeah.
The girls are great at City Hall, they'll make sure you get whatever information you need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But thank you for being involved.
Yep.
It's important.
So, any further citizens' comments on non-agenda items? Okay? Close, it will move on to agenda item five, city council comments. Would you like to start on any?
I don't really have anything.
Thank you.
Sure, I had the opportunity a few mornings to help Ron Culp and the group put out the flags during the 21-day flag salute. What a dedicated group of people that show up those 21 days in the morning and the evening to place the flags and retire the flags. I love that that tradition still goes on, I know that started with Scotty Culp, and through the years, that tradition has gone on, so I think that's really special for our city. I was glad to be a part of it a few days.
Thank you, Mark.
All I want to say is, I agree with you, I want one morning, and I'm just glad that Ronnie picked up the gauntlet and ran with it because he's carrying on Scotty's tradition.
Thanks, thank you. I'll just say one thing, so July 4th, kind of that weekend, we had a little block party, which was a pretty interesting block party.
How about a neighborhood party?
A neighborhood party, yes.
Eight streets involved.
Yes, it went really well, and it was a lot of fun. But it was interesting to me because I met a lot of people that just moved into our town within the last year, and it was very interesting, their perspective of the City of Satellite Beach.
Some of them didn't know who you were.
Yeah, which was the good part of it. But it was very interesting, you know, what they told me about why they moved here, you know, the research they did, and one lady said, boy, I came to California, I didn't even believe a place like this existed, the things you guys do. So I think it's always interesting, because a lot of times as council and the people that work for our city don't always get to hear that, but it was interesting that these are a new generation of people who are moving to our town, and they moved here for a reason. So I just thought I would share that with you. Any further, council?
I have one other thing I forgot.
Yes.
Sorry. I just want everybody to know, in case you didn't know, all of the Satellite Beach schools, Delora, Satellite, Holland, and Surfside, were all A-rated schools. Great schools make for a great neighborhood. A lot of those people that came with kids came for that reason, and a great neighborhood keeps our schools great, so it's a strong cycle with a tradition of excellence, so.
Thank you. Okay, any further? Okay, thank you, council. I'll move on to city attorney report.
I don't have anything.
Thank you. City manager, Courtney.
Thank you, mayor, as everybody heard already, we're going to have a meeting, two meetings coming up on the 23rd and the 1st, and we're going to be talking about, you know, very similar to the past growth management meeting that we had, the growth and development meeting we had about a year ago, we're going to do a very similar presentation, but we'd also want to include, you know, the proposal of the 10-foot height increase for commercial properties adjacent to A1A, and so that'll be on the, you know, be proposed, and we want to get some feedback before we finalize anything, you know, and move forward. So those, those postcards did go out to all the residents, and if you cannot make it, don't worry, you know, it's, we're, the staff will be making the presentation, and we're going to be recording it, so you'll be able to see what the comments were and that concern. I did receive a thank you email from Nadine, I'm just going to say Willett, thanking the police and fire departments for treating her parents with great care, and we also received another email from Katrina Hughes, thanking Robert Suddenbrino for contributing to our community maintenance. And I'm going to let Chief Pearson give you an update on the new texting and driving law, which is going to be fun for the police department enforcing.
Good evening, thank you, ma'am, for the opportunity to speak with you, mayor of city council. The House Bill 107, the texting and driving provision, was passed on July 1st, it's Florida statute 316, 305, and 306, and basically what that did is it took texting and driving and made that illegal and a primary offense. Therefore, we have the ability in law enforcement, if we see someone driving on the street and they're doing this and trying to drive in with their knee and they're on the phone, then that would be probable cause of reasonable suspicion to stop that vehicle, to investigate whether they're texting and driving, and take enforcement action if deemed necessary. The bill only applies to vehicles that are in motion, and there's several exemptions or exceptions using navigational, device for navigation, emergency alerts, something like that. But the law that states that you can't text and drive also has a complete hands-free version in school zones and in construction zones, and it makes a, makes it not only a primary offense, but you can't be on the phone at all doing anything. You can't be dialing the phone, and you can't be doing, it's got to be completely hands-free in that area when there's neither workers or an active school zone. The only difference between the two is a construction zone can be up, signs up as a construction zone, but if there's no one there, then it would not, would not likely be able to stop someone for the hands-free violation. However, in a school zone, there doesn't have to be children present, if it's an active school zone, whether there's a kid anywhere in sight, doesn't make any difference. That would be the difference between the construction and the school zone as far as enforcement. We will be doing all warnings until the 1st of the year, just for education and for every other reason, I just think it's good practice, we've kind of always done that, or at least ever since I've been making those decisions, and I like the fact that when, especially when new laws come in, if there's an egregious violation or something, certainly that's going to be a case by case, but for the most part, the message is that we're going to issue warnings for that. And I just think it's a good step in the right direction. There's many, 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 many other states, they're all completely hand-free, and we're just, we're slow to catch up, but the enforcement's going to be extremely difficult, as you can imagine. How do we know if someone's texting or dialing the phone? Because technically, dialing the phone is not texting and driving. And while they call it the distracted driving bill, it really isn't a distracted driving bill, because you can be distracted doing five other things on your phone, it's all illegal, but if you're on the text message going, honey, I'm going to be late, and you're typing that in, that's a, now it's a ticketable offense, three points on your driver's license. And as a point of interest, the very first one you get, you can go to the class and have the points wiped off, but the class isn't your standard, you go to the, you know, you go to the four-hour driving school that we all have been heard of and are used to, this is a specific distracted driving course that you go to to have the points you want.
I have a question. How do you check to see, do you make them show you your phone, do you make them unlock it, is there like privacy issues that, how do you prove that they were?
Everything you said except for the make them part is accurate, certainly just like any crime, I mean, we stop cars all the time and say, hey, do you have anything illegal in your, in your car? And they're going, ah, no. You know, you go, hey, you mind if we look? Oh, sure, and then we look, and, you know, but if they say, no, thank you, well, then unless we have probably called, we don't. This is the exact same situation. Someone will say, or we stop someone saying, it looked like you were texting and driving, and they say, no, I wasn't, do you mind showing your phone, prove to me that you weren't? Sure, and if they do, and they weren't, well, then they're good, or if they do, and we hit the texting, and there it was, and it's half tight, you know, then, but it's just like anything, we can't compel them to do anything. And what we would do is to expand on your, to the answer, if it was a crash and we believed that the person was texting, because that happens often, as you can imagine.
Yeah.
All we have to do is to pin up the phone records, and it'll, it'll absolutely tell you to the tenth of a second, I think, or some crazy thing, that the phone records are what they were doing on that device. And the other piece of interesting legislation just is that it's a requirement that you have to note what device they were on when you issued a citation, you know, cell phone, tablet, you know, whatever.
Seems like it could be pretty tricky for you guys to really enforce that, it's going to be sort of a nightmare, it's not like a seatbelt where it's really obvious and you're not looking into somebody's private stuff.
I understand.
Yeah.
But it's a step in the right direction, so.
Have fun with that, I agree.
And this is one of those laws, I think it's going to keep the honest people honest, as I said, you know, the people that don't normally do it anyway aren't going to do it, and the people that just flat out are just, this is the ones that you see driving on 95 and they're doing this, and all over the world, they're probably going to do it anyway, but at least now there's teeth in it, should their car have crashed or anything like that, so that, again, step in the right direction. Yes, ma'am? I thought you had a-
I did, but I, does it, does it count for the self-driving cars?
No, no, because you have to be, no, that's a great question.
No, you don't, there are cars that just go on the computer.
Yeah, you, the vehicle has to be in motion and you have to be operating the vehicle.
Okay.
So in theory, you pull up to parallel park, and you hit the button for your car to parallel park it self, and then you say, get the cable in here, you know, you're golden.
Interesting.
Yeah, the automated vehicles is very interesting, I gave the city manager an update on that at staff meeting recently, it's here, it's like you said.
Yes. So, no, and next meeting we'll give you an update on the new marijuana hem.
Yeah.
Jeff?
This is another one.
When you give, when you give a warning, is it a physical, you write out a warning?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that warning, other agencies know that warning was written out if this person gets pulled over another time, or is it just your department that knows they've been given a warning? Because if, if you give a warning in Satellite Beach and the person that you're talking about is one of those habitual people, and he's pulled over in Melbourne Beach doing the same thing, do they know he's been given a warning already?
That's a great question. A few years ago, the answer would be no, but because you all were supportive of the city manager and got us connectivity and got us the New World, where now we're connected with everybody, anybody that's on the New World platform will be able to see exactly that. So not every single agency's on that, but the ones that are in this county would be able to say, hey, you were given a warning. Now they have to look for it, so if they just, it's not going to just pop up, you know, or anything, and that actually, but that's routine practice for us, if we stop someone for something, we go check and see if they have any other warnings or issues or problems.
So if you ran into that scenario and one of our officers recognized they've been giving a warning before, are we going to write them a ticket?
After January, if, yes, after January. Basically, it's just a blanket warning until January.
Okay.
Barring any extreme circumstantial crash or something.
Any further questions for chief? Chief, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
See you the next one.
Oh, no, that's okay. So Alan was going to give you an update on infrastructure, he's got a written report in my, but he didn't feel good, so I let him go home.
Okay.
But DeSoto, basically DeSoto's complete, we are putting in the kiosk coming up at the end of the month, so that'll be added. Time Street has been completed, the stormwater on Time Street, and then also replacements are underway on Temple and DeSoto right now, and you can definitely see that. And then also FPL is doing work on DeSoto in some of the connecting streets, and we've been getting calls about that, because they don't do the same notifications like we do and stuff like that. But it is a hardening project, so they are important, and unfortunately, we can't control what they do, it's in the rideaway, so they have full right to be there, and then, you know, we also want to support their hardening projects, but the, unfortunately, they don't get the same notices that we do, so residents are unaware, we're caught by surprise, so we have gotten some calls on that. But I think we've coordinated with FPL and asked them to, you know, in the future, to start giving some notice to the residents, or at least to us, so we can notify them. to start giving some notice to the residents, or at least to us, so we can notify them. And I wanted to let you know that we did upload the budget to the website so far. And the, I have two action items. I know I have one in my report, but I'm adding one. The first one is, in partnership with Keep Revard Beautiful, there are these new handy cigarette butt holders, and they, we call them kiosks. And there's a picture in your packet, and they can be added to a boardwalk, which is the primary areas where we find these, we clean these things up. So, we would like your permission to go ahead and install these, and we're, well, we're gonna be submitting an application to KAB, to Keep Revard Beautiful, and request that, you know, 25 litter stands be added to all city buildings, Gate Park, DeSoto Park, and 15 beach accesses. So, with your permission, we would like to go ahead and do that.
Okay. I think it's great, because if you ever pick up with a Ian on Saturday mornings, to me, it's just...
Number one thing we pick up.
Absolutely amazing that someone cannot walk three feet and put a cigarette butt in a can. Just the number that are around is staggering, so I'm glad, this is great.
I, I go there and pick up cigarette butts when I go with Ethan, and I fill up two quart bags sometimes of cigarette butts, because I pick them up with little rubber gloves on, and I don't use anything, and that's all I pick up. So, I'm hoping that we have these there. Also, we need one on both sides of the clubhouse.
Yeah.
Because in the sand out in front of the clubhouse and by the front door, if I don't pick up 40 of them out by the front door, I don't pick up any.
Okay.
So, they definitely need to be around that building for the use that it gets, there's a lot of smokers.
Okay.
And they use it, so...
That's a great idea.
I'll make an app, I'll make a motion to submit an application to Keep America Beautiful and request 25 litter stand units for all our city buildings, Gate Park, DeSoto Park, and our beach accesses.
Thank you. Have a second?
I'll second it, but I think Jody has a question.
Councilman Gibson, discussion from council?
Is smoking allowed at the skate park?
Yes, there's a, there, we are preempted by the state of Florida from regulating smoking in public areas, but we added a smoking area at the skate park to try to curb that complaint we get from parents. So, there is an area, and we try to move them over there.
I know there are adults there as well, but, okay. Is this, are they gonna use the cigarette butts to do the recycling thing we were talking about, Nick?
This is for Recycle America, so they're not doing the terror cycle program, but they probably shouldn't use cigarettes. They're, anyway.
Okay.
Any further questions? Okay, at this time, open up for public comment on this action item.
On purpose, 135 Maple. The only thing is, you added one place, which was two ends of the clubhouse. I mean, you ought to ask for 26 instead of 25, just 25.
Thank you. Public comment on this action item? Here are no further. Back to council. Any further discussion?
Is there a cost involved for our city? We're just...
No, I think it's a, it's just a straight, straight grant, so...
Great.
So, we can ask for, actually, it'd be 27, right? 27, because two entrances, so yeah, so it'd be 27, that's what we're asking.
Okay.
Well, we said all city buildings, that's a city building, were we counting that as a city building?
Oh, okay.
So, we really, do we need just one more?
So, it's one more than... Yeah, you're right, I'm sorry.
You asked for 30, you're getting 1,000s.
Yeah, ask for, I mean, ask for 30, you're gonna find other areas. I mean, there's people that smoke over there by where the community garden is.
We probably could use some extra ones at Shell Street.
Sure, exactly.
I'll amend my motion to ask for 30.
Second, and my second, I second, right? Yes, okay.
Thank you. Noted?
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Next, Kaden.
Yes, motion passes. Great, good one. Thank you. Courtney, you have one more action item?
I do. I need, we need the mayor to, you know, we, how we apply every year for the JAG grant, right? If that's what we call it?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, the JAG grant. And this is for the, for the transport van, and we, so we authorized to give our portion of the grant to Revard County to purchase the van. So, I just need your council's approval for you to sign this letter.
Okay.
This, this is, you know, we've been doing this for years.
Do it every year.
It saves our police officers having to go back and forth to the jail transporting prisoners, so I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the mayor signing the agreement with the county.
Motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Vice Mayor Brymer. This time, open up for public comment on this agenda item, excuse me, action item. Here are none. Bring it back to council, any further? Counsel?
Nope.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Courtney, any further?
Yep.
Action, okay. Thank you. Move on to, let me make sure I got this right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 9. So, we're moving that agenda item, and that's, discuss, take action on Resolution 1014. Jim?
Resolution number 1014, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Revard County, Florida, to work towards the city's long-term goal of phasing out the use of single-use plastic items and expanded polystyrene for styrofoam products by Satellite Beach city staff within the next six months for operational use and establishing a green team to guide city employees in becoming more sustainable in each department and municipal facilities, working towards a cleaner and safer environment, city, beach, ocean, inner lagoon, and providing an effective date. So, reading a resolution number 1014.
Thank you very much. Questions? So, when we rent out, starting at some date now, Pelican Beach and Pavilions, are we gonna hand them an educational pamphlet to tell them that they cannot have single-use plastics there?
This, this is, this isn't about people renting our facilities, this is about city staff in the city operations.
Can't, can we expand it to city property?
So, Matt, Orleans 129 does that already?
Does it, does it cover it already?
And they already have the forms for all the different buildings and...
But not single-use plastics.
Our rental contracts right now include the, that you can't use, that the city has a ban on plastic straws and styrofoam.
About single-use plastics?
So, when you have, this, and this is what we're trying to explain, for this particular endeavor, the city wants to start on our operations, our departmental operations, and we need six months to be able to complete that, because it's a lot harder to not use single-use plastics than you think. So, for example, even the fire department just walked into my office last week and said, "We got a donation of a flat of water bottles from," I can't remember who donated it to us.
A woman's father.
And it wasn't that great, and I was like, "No," you know? But, but it's a, you know, so it's just, they use water bottles every day, so getting them to stop is gonna be a challenge. That's why we're creating the green team, so they can come up with ways to accomplish that, but it's going to be a, a significant culture change. And it's hard to do, because there's not a lot of alternatives offered out there. So, so when you're looking at somebody who's doing a wedding at the, at the clubhouse, you know, we're, our city's taking a six-month green team process to figure out how we're gonna stop using coffee cups and, you know, you know, things like that. So, to ask community members to do that at this point, I would think, you know, we're not even at that point, so I think it would be hard for us to...
When we get there, I'd like, at least for us, to take a look at how we can do that, especially start from, you know, just at our facilities, a little more than what we've done.
It's very important to us, or is, for the city staff and the departments, to be able to provide that example first. And, you know, when we started talking about, you know, like, how are we going to accomplish, you know, and overcome some of the things that we use, it is a lot more difficult than we anticipated.
You know, I, you're hitting on something that's, you know, I can't tell you how many zip ties I've picked up around the railing at the clubhouse, because they have a wedding, and they put stuff on the railing, and they zip tie all the stuff, and then at the end of the night, you just go out and cut it, falls down, and it's just sitting there. I mean, I pick up zip ties, every time I go there is at least 10 or 12 of them, so...
And they do that because they can't hammer into the facilities.
This stuff is, it's there, and people use it all the time, so...
Yeah, I will say, one of the things that are gonna come out with the green team is there'll be a list of products, there'll be a list of, you know, different activities and different things that they're gonna come into by talking with each department head and each department head selecting an individual to lead the green team from that department to address all those issues that they're gonna come up with over that six months, so that we can implement it and lead by example. Personally, I've been trying to go plastic-free for July, the whole month, and it is extremely difficult as an individual to not purchase plastics in our society, so coming up with a team that can create a framework for individuals is gonna be the smart way to do it. As much as I wanted to go for it at first, it was with, you know, the direction from city manager, that we had to do it in a way that's gonna be applicable, that we can actually have success.
And you need to have the staff buy into it. So, you know, like when we did the glyphosate ban, it took us six months to research alternatives, and like, again, you know, our entire operations are built around using those chemicals, so to stop using them tomorrow is not feasible. You have to figure out how you're gonna fill, you know, change that, and, you know, what areas you're not gonna spray it on, and so, and that, you know, you all know this, but that's the, it's a lot harder than, than we think. And so, like, you look at the police department and look at the break room, you know, I mean, it's full of plastic, so getting that to change is, you know, is always a challenge.
Just, this goes back to cleaning up our house before...
Yes. Now, this, I want to point out that this does not apply to general employees in their, what they do on their own time, what they do on their lunch hour, you know, that's not something, so I don't want the public or anyone else to think that they can walk up to a Satellite Beach employee when they're, you know, at Publix and they buy a two-liter Coke for their home, you know, to start berating them, you know, that's not the intent of this, it's for city funds, basically, not to be spent on it anymore.
Yeah. I just, the only reason I'm, it's kinda always on my mind, in April, I was in the middle of nowhere, in the Atlantic, this little island. I mean, absolutely nothing around for miles and miles, except these little tiny islands. And I was walking, I just kinda all of a sudden stopped. The amount of plastics that were on these islands, just in the middle of nowhere, that there wasn't people within an hour and a half of these places, tons of plastic. And you just realize, if they're there, look how much is in a place like this. So, I think this is great, it's a good start, I just, hopefully, we can continue with it and make it stronger sometime.
Well, I just, you know, when I started on the sustainability board, it started with the styrofoam and deleting by example, and it's very hard for me, and I always say this, it's hard to go straight into bans, and it's not that I don't think these things shouldn't be used, but you have to win people over, and if you're not willing to do it in your own house, you can't expect other people to do it. So, I think this is a really great first step, and I think we're gonna, it's gonna be a really good learning experience, because we may find that, you know, there's different stages of doing this, you know, maybe just start out with the grocery bags, which, because those are the bane of my existence right now. But, you know, I just, I think it's wonderful that we're doing this, and staff, thank you for, good choice.
Any further counsel before I open up for public? Okay, at this time, for Agenda Item 9, which is Resolution 1014, open up for public comment.
On purpose again, I'm wondering whether there aren't some exceptions here, at least for a while. I expect anytime the police, or especially the firefighters, interact with somebody, they wind up putting on plastic gloves. That's a one-time use, that's the way it's intended to be. And I'm sure there's a lot of the stuff, that if you go on one of the fire engines right now, pull open their emergency stuff, you'll find all kinds of plastic one-time. And so, the question is, how's this going to be addressed? I can't imagine they can change in six months or even a year or two. There may need to be some kind of, I'll call it professional exception.
I think they're rubber, aren't they?
Yeah, they're rubber gloves, latex.
Gloves are latex.
Okay.
They still take forever to break down the environment.
But I'm sure they're, you know, you...
But they're...
There's a lot of stuff they have.
Yeah, there's the gloves, bandages and things, you know, you tear it open, and it's just a thing that I think that, like Nick said, it's hard for you and me to do. I think for these guys, it's gonna be extremely hard. It'll be a great challenge, but I don't think they wanna lock them into it somehow.
Some things won't be, some things you're not gonna be able to...
Medical, medical equipment wasn't something that we...
Public, I think in the final, there'll be any questions for some things on that.
Good evening. I'm Gail Meredith from Grand Avenue in Satellite Beach. Thank you so much for doing this, it's so important, and obviously, it's not gonna be easy, and it's a process, but you all really have the right intention, and I'm sure you'll do a great job with this, and we volunteers will help in any way we can. Vince Lamb was here to testify from the Revard Indoor and Urban Lagoon Coalition, I'm also on their board, to encourage you and thank you for doing this, it's so important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, most of you may know me. For those of you who don't, my name is Zach Newton. I'm co-founder of Igorth Friends, an environmental educational organization. I come out this evening to voice my support to remove one-time-use plastics and styrofoam. A good friend and mentor, Clayton Ferrera, co-founder of United Nations Endorsed Ideas for Us, is speaking at the UN this week, just posted this morning, a video of himself in front of the banner stating that single-use plastics are not allowed in New York City complex. So, while Florida is behind the current curve globally, it is great to see Satellite Beach joining as a leader to move, to move forward in this world movement, to stop one-time-use plastics and styrofoam. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Zach, appreciate you coming up. Any further?
Hi, my name is Cherry Mott.
You can move in.
Short. I just wanted to add to Gail's comment, to thank you very much for doing this, it's because it's so important. And I just wanted to also say that I'm a sustainability consultant in training, and I've traveled around the country in the last year and a half to sustainability conferences around the represented for leaders in the international sustainability business movement, and I just wanted to give you just one note, I got an invite today to a sustainability summit in Amsterdam, and the four keynote addresses of the fourth one, this is for business leaders from around the world, the fourth one is packaging workshop, the quest to replace plastic packaging. So, I just wanted to let you know there's good news coming from the business environment.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's the challenge, is where do you get it? Where do you get the alternative? And so, you know, we're gonna have to get creative, that's why we want the green team is to be, you know, to get minds together, the smarter minds.
Great. Any further public? Here are none. Back to council.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution number 1014.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Gibson?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Rosicky. Further discussion from council? Here are none.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Brymer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Next, Kaden.
Yes, motion passes. Staff, thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Well, we'll move back to Agenda Item Eight. Thank you. Discuss, take action on using the Recreation Trust Fund not to exceed $8,000 to purchase and modify a pontoon boat. Cassie?
Hello again. Um, so back at the end of May, uh, we took the existing pontoon boat out of water for some very badly needed, um, updates. Um, we were going to redo the deck, um, replace some of the seating, things like that. Uh, we found out shortly after taking it out of the water that, uh, the pontoons were in pretty bad shape. Um, they were to a point that they could not be repaired, um, a lot of soft spots. Um, I think on one side, we had a picture with, um, like toothpicks that had holes all the way, um, through the, the aluminum, probably fifty to a hundred on one side of one pontoon. So, um, we had a, an aluminum person look at it and they said they won't even touch it. So, um, so we started looking for some other options for boat because we need a way to get over to Simpson Island.
And we wanted to stop the phone calls from Steve Osman.
So, um, we were able to find, uh, uh, something that would work for us online. Um, the trouble with purchasing a used boat is everything, most of them come with an engine. We didn't need an engine because ours was just fine, wasn't that old, um, it's in good shape. So, um, we did find a used boat that didn't have an engine on it, um, at a really good price. So we needed to move quickly, um, so that we didn't lose that opportunity. Um, I reached out to the Recreation Board to see if we could use Recreation Trust Fund money to, to make that purchase. Uh, the boat was listed for, um, four thousand, we were able to talk them down to thirty-five hundred. Um, and then, um, I had asked the, the Rec Board, um, for funds of eight thousand, up to eight thousand. Because once we got that, we would need to move the engine over from the old boat to the new boat. There's an expense with that, we needed bottom paint on the, the new pontoons. So, um, the Rec Board approved unanimously to, to spend eight thousand, up to eight thousand dollars from the Recreation Trust Fund. And so now I am bringing it to you for your approval. And then, um, what are we doing with the old boat? So we can scrap, um, the old boat for the aluminum, it's about four hundred dollars, and that money will go back into the Recreation Trust Fund.
Great, thank you. Let me ask just a couple of questions, boats. Holes in the motor, ocean, poor mining too. Is the engine good?
Yes.
I mean, it's, it's fine?
Yeah.
Okay. I hate to put the money in it and not have the engine because there, that's a huge expense on most boats. But we're safe with the engine, that we're going to get the use out of it?
Yes.
That we know.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So also with aluminum boats, I think it'd be a good idea for them to check on electrolysis things because the reason the pontoons have holes in them is because they're aluminum and you have current going through your engine, even when it's just sitting there. And, you know, most of them have zincs and you put zincs on this, over the side, so the zinc is a softer metal. So I know pontoon boats and other type of aluminum boats have that big issue.
Nikki told me that, and so we made arrangements to look at that, yeah.
Great. I'm glad you found one. I know it gets used a lot.
It does, yes. Um, Public Works uses the, the pontoon boat, um, to move equipment back and forth over to the island. Um, the recreation staff, uh, transports visitors over there, uh, on a weekly basis. Um, so, but we, we use it all the time.
It looks nicer than the previous one.
It is in much better than the previous.
That's why we jumped on it, because we were like, oh, let's go down there and get it now.
Yeah, it was a, I looked at that and I looked at, on Boat Trader and all that, on pontoon boats. And when I saw that one, I was like, boy, this is like a really good deal.
A good deal, yeah.
So. Okay, any further questions from council? Um, open up for public comment on this Agenda Item. Here are none. Do the council have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve funds from the Recreation Trust Fund not to exceed eight thousand dollars to purchase and modify the pontoon boat. That's used by Rec and Public Works.
Do you want to add the second part to it for?
If we can do it all in one motion, yeah. And, uh, to take the four hundred dollars that's coming in from, uh, scrap to reimburse the Recreation Trust Fund.
Great. I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro?
Second.
Second by Councilman Gibson. Any further discussion? Glenn?
Okay, Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
And Mayor Katina?
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, nine we've done. Move on to Agenda Item Ten. Discuss, take action on Resolution 1013.
Resolution Number 1013, a resolution of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed one million, four hundred and sixty-three thousand dollar principal amount of City of Satellite Beach, Florida, half-cent sales tax revenue note series twenty-ten, twenty-nineteen, excuse me, for the purpose of financing various capital projects, including but not limited to facility maintenance improvement or replacement, lighting enhancements and energy efficiency upgrades. Pledging half-cent sales tax revenues to secure payment of the principal of and interest on such note, making such determinations as are required to afford such note bank-qualified status, making certain covenants and agreements for the benefit of the holder of such note, authorizing certain officials and employees of the city to take all actions required in connection with the sale, issuance and delivery of such note, making certain covenants and agreements in connection therewith, and providing an effective date. It's the reading of Resolution Number 1013.
Thank you. Courtney?
So, um, as you recall, we've been working with ABM and we have postponed the approval of that contract to the next meeting, largely because we just couldn't get finalized language in time to get, we're done with the contract negotiation. But we would, we would have given you a sixty-nine-page contract a day before the meeting, and we thought that wasn't fair. So we moved that to, um, to the next meeting. But this would be the loan that would implement those projects. So approving it tonight is okay. Um, you can't, if you get to the ABM contract, you can go down in costs, but we wouldn't be able to go up. So that, that would be your limitation, okay? Um, but I want to explain some things here that the, um, there's some misinformation on Facebook and social media, and I wanted to, um, address some of that. The, the source that we're pledging, if you look at your budget on page sixty, there's intergovernmental revenues. And you'll see half-cent state, half-cent state sales tax. We are pledging that revenue to pay for this note, which is why it's called what it's called. It is not the lagoon sales tax. We're not raising taxes. We're not going to referendum to create a sales tax. Is that what's been out there? Yes. It's existing, we've been getting calls all day. It's existing revenue that we're simply pledging to pay off the note, okay? So that's number one.
And this is just a forever reoccurring half-cent, it's never going to go away, so that's why we can use it.
Correct. We pick that revenue because it's very stable and it, you know, it's, so it doesn't, um, you know, that's a, a stable pledge, a funding source for the.
And it's definitely enough. We don't have to pull from anywhere else to ever pay off this loan. Like it'll, that'll always cover the payments moving forward.
Yeah.
So that's continuing, that's a continuing.
So, yes.
That's going to.
So, the intent of this loan in ABM was to do facility improvements, facility improvements, not infrastructure improvements to facilitate growth and development. This is for facilities that are owned by the city. So these improvements include comfort control upgrades, thermostat, that's thermostat replacements, HVAC replacements and improvements, citywide LED lighting in city-owned lights. Okay? Not developer lights, city-owned lights. Solar lighting around the lake at De Soto Park. Building envelope modifications to reduce infiltration and exfiltration of air in and out of buildings. Roof replacement and telephone system upgrades. It has absolutely nothing to do with.
Development.
Development. In everything to do with normal city maintenance of city-operated buildings. So that's number two. Number three is our charter has a limitation for debt obligations. And there has been a lot of statements about this, whether the city can borrow money with this charter provision. And I'm trying to find it out there. We have a charter provision that says, I'll get to it, sorry, borrowing. And the first is temporary revenue deficiencies. And that section requires us that we cannot borrow, um, any borrow, any amount borrowed shall not exceed one-fourth of one percent of the assessed value of all taxable properties in the city. However, that section doesn't apply to this because this is temporary revenue deficiencies, meaning you're in the middle of a budget year. You've already set your millage rate, you're already getting your property taxes and you've set your expenditures. You get a category five hurricane and you don't have enough money. So you do a temporary borrowing to get revenue to come in to take care of these things. That's what this is for. So that has nothing to do with what we're doing here. The second section of the charter says financing for projects. This one applies. And this one says the city may borrow money to finance any project and so and so and so. And it says, "The city's total outstanding indebtedness, including the proposed amount, shall not exceed five percent of the assessed value of all taxable properties in the city." Now, there's also a claim that the city's assessed value was nine million. If that was true, our, our revenues would be seventy-eight thousand. That's not true. So our, our assessed value is actually nine hundred and sixty million. And that means we have a debt capacity of forty million. And we are actually, our debt burden is ten. So we're well within the charter provisions to borrow these funds. So I just wanted to clear that up. We will be creating a Facebook post to combat that in the future. But, so this debt service is, um, is perfectly fine. It's been reviewed by our bond counsel, it's been, uh, reviewed by PFM. And also, um, we had, we got a great interest rate of two-point-five-five percent. So for fifteen-year, a fifteen-year note.
Courtney, um, one, four, six, three. You're comfortable?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
For two-five-five, it's kind of, we're doing projects. How old is the, uh, air conditions on the rec center?
Twenty years.
Things are getting to, like, I mean, we've known this for a while, that floors and roofs and.
And we were, we were, you know, it's always a struggle for us, especially older, sorry, older administrators. Because we, in the past, you would never use that service for maintenance, I have said that. Um, but now it's very common largely because of the skyrocketing in construction costs. And, um, and especially in a situation where you're at the point where you really need to do it now. And that's where we're at with a lot of these situations. So, um, so when we looked at the, um, with the really great interest rate that we got, the, and then also, um, even investing money while we're using it is bringing in a lot of what's costing us in interest, so that helps as well. But the, the, the cost would be greater to us if we didn't do it now, it would be a lot greater.
Some of the assurance to the, the road we paved, we should have paved it.
That's correct. And then we also, because they're doing the LED, portion of that is offsetting some of that payment with the energy savings under the statute, so.
I guess, but, yeah, I'd like to make a comment on what you said before about the, um, older, um, the way that we should do things without not ta, with not taking debt. And what that did is basically these people, and with all well and good intentions, based on what the culture was at the time, is you, if you couldn't afford to do it, you didn't do it. Well, sometimes you have to get things done and you can't afford to do it, like roads and maintenance. And so by kicking the can down the road, now we have this huge, huge bill of things that need to be done. I mean, what, some of the roads here are forty years old and have never been paved, repaved. I mean, you can't, you can't do that. So the only way that we could legitimately do this is to take in debt service. I mean, I fight it, I don't, I don't like it. I mean, I don't like debt, but, I mean, I also like to drive my car and want to not have to replace my tires every other day. So, um, it's something I think that we, we don't really have a choice in two percent interest. I mean, how can you beat that?
It's really good interest rate. We're very, we're very happy with that.
Yeah. I'm very supportive of this.
Thank you.
And I agree with Mindy, I don't like debt either, but this is a reoccurring funding source that we have available to us for exactly what we're looking at using it for here. And it's like, uh, anything else in life. I mean, you know, whether it's in your home or whether it's your vehicles, you know, you've got to be able to know the roof doesn't leak and know when you go out and turn the ignition on, the car's going to start. So, you know, whatever you have to do to make sure that, you know, you're going to be able to do those things, you do. And, you know, you have to be fiduciarily responsible in how you do it. So this is what we have to do right now to get the things we need done. And we're doing them in a way where, um, we're getting them all taken care of, we have the funding source available, and it's, it's a no-brainer for me.
Okay, further? At this time, open up for public comment on this Agenda Item. Here are none. Back to council, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1013.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Montanaro, second by Councilman Gibson. Further discussion?
Councilwoman Rosicky?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Mayor Katina?
Yes. And then you'll bring back the other portion, which was eleven, at the next meeting.
That's correct. And I just wanted to make sure, um, council knew that the, the, the people that were posting these, I guess you could call it fake news, to social media, never once called us to get their facts, never emailed us, never asked us. Unfortunately, those posts did create phone calls to us and a lot of questions to me, um, as well as Liz. And it wasted a lot of our time. Um, so as much as I tried to tell people to call us before they do stuff like that, I understand that this group is doing this purposely, just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. And, you know, probably we'll be talking to you on how you want me to respond to some of this stuff because, um, I know that we've been trying to disengage in some manner, but there's, you know, in, in this instance, um, when people are saying that we're doing something illegal and that we're defrauding and we're taking payments from developers when it has absolutely nothing to do, it's just, at that some point, we're, we, you know, it would be my advice to say something back, and, you know, so it would be.
I thought that you happened to be.
You have my permission.
Yeah, I think you, no, like you and I have always talked, we don't tell lies, we tell the truth, you put the truth out there. And it is what it is, and put the information out there. Those who want to believe are going to, the other ones are not. You just put the information out there to best our ability. But I would say, once we put it out there, don't get in the conversation with them because you're, we're not gaining anything and we're going to be wasting a lot of staff time, but.
So we just put the post out there?
Information that you know how to do it, I mean, you're brilliant at it. So just do it, and that's my feeling, I'm only one. But I just say, get the information out there that's correct, so people have the right information.
We've had this conversation, I've had this conversation with you many times. If there's information out there that's not correct, we need to correct it, period.
Okay, we'll go ahead and create a post then, and, and I'll, I'll review it with you all before we do that, so you can see.
And is, is there any sort of, if they make criminal accusations towards you, um, on a social that are unbiased? You know, I had to correct somebody that was saying I was taking some sort of back-money deal. And I'm like, you know, I'm going to send you a bill for what it's cost me to be on council. And, uh, then, you know, there, you can pay my bill because it's, it's not, this is a, we're doing this, just for people that don't understand this, this, this is not something we make money on. I, it costs me money to do this. And to imply at any point in time that I personally have taken a bribe or something like that is asinine. And, um, they obviously just have nothing better to do with their time. But it's unacceptable and I personally won't stand for it, period.
I want us to put the information out there, the correct information, and then get off of it.
Yep.
Because you're never going to.
No.
That, that percentage of people are never going to believe anything you're putting out there, so just put it off.
Are you getting good on ten?
Yes, sir.
Steph, thank you. Eleven has been pulled, I said that earlier. Agenda Item Eleven, and we'll return to that next time. Move on to Agenda Item Twelve. Discuss, take action on Ordinance 1172. Jim?
Ordinance Number 1172, an ordinance of the City of Satellite Beach, Brevard County, Florida, amending the city board's handbook created by Ordinance 1101 to create and include youth council, establishing the duties, composition, terms of office, support staff designation, and day of meeting for youth council, providing severability, providing an effective date. It's the first reading, Ordinance 1172.
Great. Do I have a motion?
So, I'll, I'll, I'll pull one back.
Oh, can I make it?
Yes.
I make a motion to pass Ordinance Number 1172.
Thank you. A motion by council.
It's okay to.
Second by Vice Mayor Breimer. This is, that, this is a council one, Rosicky, this is a trial, which I think is great.
I never pulled one back that fast, but I would have gotten killed, I think, so.
Do you want to introduce it, or do we even need to be, everybody knows it?
Yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Um, I, I'll tell you, I'm glad you brought this up, but I also would like you, Glenn, and city staff, to make sure that the Florida League of Cities, they have the clips that they put out daily. I think it's important that we make sure that they understand and know that we're doing a youth council because I see these in the Florida League of Cities clips all the time from different cities. And I think there are things that we do in our city that informationally should be going to the Florida League of Cities because they post these things. And we are, we are a poster child in the state of Florida. They recognize the, the things that we do in Satellite Beach that other cities just aren't doing. So the more things that we can send them, um.
We can create a press release, can that be okay? And send that to them as well? And send it to Florida today? I love it.
George is a great idea. George is sitting right. George is right here.
George.
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 Write it up, George.
All right, great. At this time, open up for public comment on agenda item 12. Here are none. Back to council. Jody, great.
May I ask, is our idea okay? Did you look over the application, the parameters?
I already, I already made one phone call, because I know somebody that I think would be perfect on this.
That is great.
Does anyone have ideas or something to add, something to change?
I think it's great.
Just one comment. I think that if this makes a difference in the life of one kid, then it accomplishes everything it set out to do, so, no, I think it's, I think it's a wonderful thing.
Yeah, thank you so much, Jody. It was a great idea.
And Glenn did all the work.
Good job, Glenn.
Great job, guys.
Cassie is willingly taking the lead.
All right.
Cassie got voluntold.
I wasn't, I wasn't going to use that phrase.
And George, run, run with it.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montanaro?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Breimer?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ruzicki?
Yes.
Mayor Cino?
Yes, motion passes. Great job, Jody, lovely. Okay, moving on to agenda item 13, which is, we will have a workshop prior to our council meeting on the 7th to interview for board applicants, okay? And also, in the packet here, and the same item, is the August 7th proposed regular meeting agenda items. Remember, it's just proposed, and if anything else needs to go on, please meet with our city manager.
Just, just one question, Mr. Mayor. Courtney, on for the meeting on the 23rd at 6 o'clock, are we, will council get kind of an update packet beforehand, or...
Oh, sure. I can send you the presentation.
Okay.
I already have it done, so we'll go ahead and do it.
Just to kind of trigger what we're looking at. I'm out of time on both of those dates.
I'll be at both of them. I'll report back if you will.
I will, too.
That'd be great. And it's publicly noticed, right? So we're not...
Good for the history, too.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, by the way, did you see the, from history? Did you see the picture I sent you?
Yes.
Thank you. It's a picture I'll show, I've got it posted. 1958, A1A Satellite Beach, there's a little sign, says, "Welcome to Satellite Beach, drive safely."
Just always.
And, 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 yes, and what you see in it is something, I, I know where exactly it was. There wasn't a phone service, and it, and you see the sign, and in the back, just a little bit away from the sign, there's a phone booth, and that was the phone booth that people made phone calls from when they first entered the city.